Hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that all board members are present. Do we have any changes in our agenda today?
No amendments, President Morgan.
Public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the City Council, the Library Board this evening that is not on the agenda? Anyone wishes to talk to the Board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent calendar.
Move the approval.
A second.
Motion a second? That motion passes five to zero. We have no department head items. Any comments from the staff?
No comments, Mr. President.
Okay, so I'm sure now someone from the Library is here to run in and talk to us. Any comments from our trustees? Seeing none, we'll adjourn.
As soon as I turn my microphone on, convene this meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District. Let the record reflect that all directors are present. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Chair Tremblay.
Okay, are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Move the approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from staff?
I'm sorry, that passes unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Manley. Yes. It's adopted unanimously, five to zero. All directors assenting. Are there any comments from staff? Any comments from directors? All right, at this point, I'll go ahead and recess the meeting of the Sanitary District to study session relative to the mid-year budget report, and that's occurring concurrently with the City Council meeting on the same subject.
I'll call this meeting of the Camrio Successor Agency, a special meeting to order, and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Are there any changes to this agenda? Next item, oh, public comments. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the successor agency to the redevelopment agency? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Move the approval. Second.
The motion, a second, to approve the consent calendar. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Any comments from staff? From council members? Legal counsel? That meeting is adjourned. Someday, we won't have to have that meeting. I'll now call the regular meeting of the Camrio City Council to order, and I'll also call a special meeting of the Camrio City Council to order. Are there any amendments to this agenda? Consent calendar is the next item. I'm sorry, I had a lapse here.
I have a question, if I might, before we take a vote on the consent calendar, just a quick question.
Okay.
If I can find my right spot here. It is on... Spin those things around. It is on item G, which is the Library or Young Adults area. And my quick question is, I thought we were done with this, so is this just catching up on our paperwork?
Actually, this item is before you as we thought, as we were wrapping up. The bills are usually in the rears, and when we anticipated the total cost, we thought that we were covered, and we got some refunds and some things like... along the way, and we felt that it would cover these costs that were billed at the conclusion of the project, and so we did not include them in the original. This is the final bill.
Okay, so just catching up with us. All righty, I think that's all I have.
Okay, item is the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Move the approval and consent calendar. Second.
The motion, a second, to approve the consent calendar. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
You might tell all the people in that long row there that did you pass the Historical Society's lease?
That did approve the Historical Society's lease for the next 25 years. Oh, we can't clap, I'm sorry. We don't allow clapping or booing.
It's okay, there's no opposition.
Okay, next item is City Council. And let me, I should have said this before we started the consent calendar. We have an urgent item we need to discuss before the mid-year budget review, so we need to be out of here by 5:45. Okay? So the next item on the agenda is item A under City Council, Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, formerly known as LACE. Could we have a board appointment?
Madam Mayor, in the interest of time, staff would request that we take item B first.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we can cover that now before we have to go into study session.
Item B, we will switch these two items. Item B is request of Councilmember Tremblay, City Council term limits. Could we have a staff report on how we go about this?
Yes, I'm going to give the agenda item, the staff report, and then I'll give it back to you, Madam Mayor. At the council meeting of January 24th, Councilmember Tremblay requested that an item be placed on the City Council agenda to discuss and consider placing a council term limit ordinance on the November 6th, 2018 general municipal election ballot. Councilmember Tremblay's proposed term limit ordinance was distributed to the City Council at that meeting, and it is attached to this agenda item. California Government Code provides that any proposal to limit the number of terms a member of the City Council may serve on the City Council, or the number of terms an elected mayor may serve, shall apply prospectively only and shall not become operative unless it is submitted to the electors of the city at a regularly scheduled election and a majority of the votes cast on the question in favor, on the question favor the adoption of the proposal. A term limits ordinance is different than, and just about every other ordinance in law that goes to initiative. A term limit ordinance cannot be adopted by a City Council. It must go to the electorate for a vote if it is to become operative. So if a qualified citizen petition is signed by 10% or more of the voters of the city, then it will be placed on the ballot, and the City Council, unlike other ordinances, does not have the option of adopting it pre-election. So we just need to be clear on that. The deadline to file the petitions for an initiative is May 18th, 2018. The deadline to submit an approved resolution to the clerk recorder to place an ordinance on the ballot is July 3rd, with the City Council approving such a resolution not later than at its June 27th, 2018 regular meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager, could you start that sentence?
Yes, of course.
Somebody better check on him.
Can Sergeant Barnes check the guest, please? The deadline to submit an approved resolution to the clerk recorder to place an agenda on the ballot is July 3rd, 2018, with the City Council approving such a resolution not later than at its June 27th, 2018 regular meeting. The clerk recorder's timeline has been attached. The County of Ventura, as well as the cities of Thousand Oaks and Ventura, all have term limit ordinances, and these have also been attached to your agenda item. On June 31st, 2018, Camrio Citizens for Term Limits submitted a notice of intent to circulate a petition for the placement of a City Council term limits ordinance on the, on the November 6th ballot. The ordinance was further revised and resubmitted on February 5th to correct minor technical errors identified by the city attorney. This corrected ordinance and its notice of intent have been attached. If the Camrio Citizens Initiative qualifies for the ballot, and the City Council either places its own ordinance on the ballot, or Councilmember Tremblay's proposed ordinance qualifies for the ballot after the required number of signatures have been gathered, then the competing initiatives, then the competing initiative that receives the highest number of affirmative votes would prevail and become the city's term limit ordinance. The cost to place a measure on the November 6th, 2018 general municipal election ballot is estimated to be approximately $13,000 to $14,000. Staff suggests one of three possible actions. One is to prepare a resolution to place a City Council term limits ordinance on the November ballot. Number two is to take no further action on Councilmember Tremblay's request, and number three is to provide other direction. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay. Mr. Tremblay, this is your proposal. I'm going to ask you to please make your statement or tell us whatever you'd like to, and then we will have the other council members...
Are those clips on this item?
I'm sorry, what?
I was going to ask if those speakers are on this item?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'd like Mr. Tremblay to explain his...
Understood.
...proposition, and then we'll do other things.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This term limits proposal follows up a commitment that I made during my campaign in 2016. I drafted the measure that is before you, and I am solely responsible for introducing it. My measure allows a maximum of three, four-year terms, i.e. 12 years. It also allows someone to run again for the council after a four-year break and be returned to office by city voters. It's my belief that if a council member has done a good job in the past, and more importantly, the voters in this city like their ideas and want them to return to the council, that's a good thing. They just won't have the advantage of incumbency in running again, and that's what term limits accomplishes. I'm requesting that the council take action this evening to place the measure which I have put in front of you, which is in the staff report, and to place that measure on the November 2018 ballot. State law requires that city voters would have to approve the measure, and if approved, it would only apply prospectively. My recent letter to the newspapers detailed my reasons for proposing the measure and my response to those who oppose term limits. My focus in making this proposal is on what I believe to be good governance and promoting citizen government. It's not intended in any way as a referendum on our council. I value both experience, together with the inclusion of, and the infusion of, new ideas and new perspectives. They are equally valuable, in my view. My intent in introducing this is to encourage attracting the best candidates possible and to increase the opportunity to bring new perspectives to the council. And in my view, periodically removing the advantages of incumbency will help reach that objective. The same term limits measure that I've proposed, for your consideration, is already in place for the city councils in the city of Ventura and the city of Thousand Oaks, as well as the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And the voters in those jurisdictions saw the wisdom of that approach. As you are all aware, I introduced my measure at our last regular meeting on January 24th and provided copies of the draft to everyone. One week after I introduced my proposal, a local group filed a different term limits proposal and a notice of intent to circulate that proposal for signature. Their measure caught me unawares. I did not talk to them before I introduced my term limits proposal. As I said before, I'm solely responsible for this, for this proposal. So like them, I support term limits, but I don't agree with their measure. It limits, their measure limits individuals to two, four-year terms and imposes a lifetime cap, so no one could come back and run again. I think this is too harsh. I think it's too restrictive, and I don't think it adequately values experience or allows voters to bring someone back that they believe has done a good job. So, again, my measure is the same as what already exists in local cities and the Board of Supervisors. I didn't see any need to reinvent the wheel in Camrio. My proposal, as far as I'm concerned, is more reasonable. In my view, it better serves this city and its residents. So I'll end with that. I'm glad we're discussing the item this evening. I think public discussion of the item is healthy, and, again, the focus is on invigorating citizen government, and that's why I introduced this.
Okay, I'm not asking for statements or opinions, I'm asking if there are any questions of either staff or Mr. Tremblay at this time. Okay, seeing nobody, we have people who would like to speak to us on this item, so I'll call you in the order I received, the names. Matthew Lorimer, you didn't give us a middle initial this time, Mr. Lorimer.
I know. Did you miss me?
Do you have a Texas accent yet?
No, he doesn't.
What'd you say?
Do you have a Texas accent yet?
I do, I do, a little bit, probably.
No, you don't.
Well, before I say what I need to talk about term limits, tragedy happened in Florida tonight. Seventeen people died. I think it's important as leaders, the newspaper, people or politicians need to come out. If you hear somebody who's going to threaten violence in a school, a neighbor, a friend, speak up. Social media, this gentleman had made threats online. You've got to speak up. But, again, you know how we remind people, don't drink and drive? We need to remind people in this country that you don't solve things by violence. I've been coming to City Council meetings for years. I've never advocated to hurt anybody or any position. I disagree. As an American, I have a right to come here, but I don't advocate violence. But I think it's an important, and we keep seeing this in this country, I would hope as City Councilmen, state, local, federal, again, you've got to remind people that if you hear something, talk about it, your local police. It's really important that we learn from mistakes, and we learn from these things. I had to say that because I feel in my heart, it's very sad. I'm really sad by the people who lost their lives in Florida. They'll never get an opportunity to get married, do different things. It's very sad. So, again, I encourage the City Council and people across who are in elected office to use their abilities. Now, let me talk about term limits. I'd wish you guys would have this at 7:30. There's a lot of people who work who didn't get that opportunity. That is one flaw, I see. The second thing, term limits have been around since the American Revolution. They're in federal, state, local. What term limits are, basically, is to curb office holders from basically staying in office as a monopoly. The President of the United States only is allowed two terms. I don't think it's too harsh to set a limit on politicians. And you know why? Because new ideas come all the time. You hire new staff members, new ideas come all the time. There's a time when we all need to go away, okay? Including myself. But...
We thought you did.
But, over the years, I think it's important, you know? I think it's an opportunity for people to get new ideas. You know, what's, you can ask yourself this question. Some of you probably eat at the same restaurant. When's the last time you picked a different restaurant to eat at? How about if you picked a different car to drive? How about if you picked a different hairstyle, a different suit? That's what term limits mean. It means an opportunity for people in this country to choose different people who have new ideas. And when you're in office too long, I hate to say it, you lose the mojo. Okay? So I hope that you will move forward with this in a positive way and look at that as not a negative but a positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for placing this item on the agenda so quickly after Mr. Tremblay brought it before the council. Term limits can be a tricky item to bring before any elected body. Some officials may take it as a desire to force them out of office, and I suppose it does. Does this mean I think that the current sitting members are doing a poor job? No. I believe you have served our city well. Your dedication to our community has helped make Camrio the wonderful place it is today. So why do I support term limits? Because I believe having a flow of new ideas coming onto the council is a good thing. I also believe that it is important for the City Council to be a reflection of the community as it evolves and grows. The term limit being discussed tonight has a three-term limit. This will help ensure a continuity of experience on the council, a valuable component in any elected body. It will also allow a council member who is re-elected for their three terms a greater likelihood of having to deal with the decisions made during their time in office. Having the opportunity to come back to the council gives the public the chance to reelect a council member that is particularly effective, should they choose to run again. In looking at the past elections of term limit measures in Ventura County, those with three terms and the ability to return have won by large margins. Measure T for the Ventura County Supervisor term limits and the Thousand Oaks City Council term limit measures won by both 77% to 22%. The Ventura City Council term limits measure won 81% to 18%. Across Ventura County, the voting public supports term limits. As you are aware, the citizen group would also like to put a measure on the ballot for term limits for the City Council. Their proposal would have a two-term limit and ability to run again. Personally, I believe a two-term limit is too short to have that continuity of experience and accountability, and prefer a three-term limit. If the council does not move forward and place a three-year term limit measure on the ballot, the two-term limit will likely get the signatures needed to be placed on the ballot and possibly the votes to pass the measure. However, if you place a three-term limit measure on the ballot, I question if the two-term limit measure will be able to get the signatures to even be placed on the ballot. Please vote to move this item forward and create a resolution to place a City Council term limits ordinance on the November general election ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and city staff, outstanding city staff and outstanding city. And as the council member carried this forward and made very eloquent statements tonight, this really is an issue that is favored by the public. We've seen this go across city after city. It is something that it does, I believe, and I have changed my mind on this over the years, that it does allow for citizen government and engagement and fresh voices and new ideas. I, too, think that a two-term would be too short for the experience and continuity that is of value when you serve as an elected official at any level. As you see, the Board of Supervisors did, did put this forward as it was carried forward by Supervisor Foy, and it was adopted, and it was a strong vote. I think that the value of having those fresh voices, having new ideas, having, having someone, I thought of Stan Daley coming here tonight, and particularly with the proposal to look at, this isn't a lifetime ban. It would allow for a Stan Daley, who served as a younger man, had some years away from public service because he was serving as a school teacher, but then he was able to run again and come back. So I think that that does allow for a greater engagement of the community and of the, of folks who wish to serve the public and be that citizen government. So I would, I certainly support the council member's proposal. I think by putting it forward, it does secure that there is this measure on the ballot, and if there's a competing measure, then we trust the voters and we let their voices be heard when it comes November 6th. So, as always, I appreciate your service, and the great city that I live in now as a retired general public person. Good to see you all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to, Mr. Tremblay's had his turn to explain his proposal, so I'm going to ask the other council members if anybody has anything to say.
Say your questions.
Questions, if you have questions, this is the time.
Questions or comments?
Questions or comments, I'll take either one.
Go ahead, Mr. Tremblay, if you want, and then I'll go next.
Mr. Kildy?
Yeah. This has been part of the last campaign that I ran on, is well fortunate enough to get elected in the, in the city here. You know, my opinion is that we already have term limits here, and all of us up on the dais are elected officials here, and I can only speak for myself, but every term that I've ran for has been more challenging than the term before. The constituents out there have no problems telling me exactly how they feel. I've won some people over, I've lost some people. I have people in the city that don't agree with me, that have no problems telling me how they feel about things, and I encourage that. I'm not perfect, far from it. We have an election here every two years, and I think it's served us well, and I think that is the term limit here, that if you're willing to have the energy, the ideas, you ought to be able to run as often as the electorate in the city is willing to elect you to this, this office here. America's all about opportunity. It's all about being anything you want to be here, certainly serving. We don't have term limits for doctors, lawyers, teachers. I don't know of any other endeavor as being an elected official that every two years and every four-year term that we have, that people actually vote and tell you how well you're doing. And as far as having other candidates, I've ran against a sitting judge, I've ran against an ex-City Council member, I've ran against an engineer, I've even ran against an accountant. And many, many people over the years have come forward and asked me about running, and I either encourage them to, I never discourage anybody. Anybody that's ever said that they wanted to run, way more times than not, they have decided to run regardless of what anything else says. It's up to the individual. So it's a philosophical thing with me, and my feeling is, is that, you know, this city has been well-run since we incorporated in 1964, and I just feel that if a person wants to run, and if they have an idea, again, if they have, willing to go out and do the shoe leather, which you do, we've all done that in, in this city here. I worked six days a week, and I would campaign at 7 o'clock at night because that was my opportunity to, to do it. So to put any, you know, limitations on the system that we already have, you know, I'm not in favor of doing that.
Mrs. McDonald?
I put my thoughts down on paper here so I could be succinct, and I'm going to kind of go through it because I know we're in a hurry for time, but I thought it was our opportunity to make our thoughts known, and so I'm going to take that opportunity. So before I begin with that, I want to make it perfectly clear that I, this issue would have no personal effect on me, and I can't speak for the rest of my veteran council, but I can't imagine myself running for office 12 years from now. So I want to make that perfectly clear so that you understand that my thoughts are my philosophical thoughts about this, and not that I'm trying to, to protect my job. I also believe it's quite an anomaly that Camrio has a veteran's City Council, and this is probably not, probably won't happen again whether we have term limits or not. I think this is very unique that it's happened, and I think it's been a good thing for the city. The city does have a reputation for being a very well-run city, a desirable city in which to live, work, and play. This veteran's stable City Council has a lot to do with that, as well as seeing many, many long-term projects through to the end. many long-term projects through to the end. My thoughts on the subject of term limits come from many years of public service here in Camarillo and from working with and observing and interacting with many other cities in California, as well as counties in our state government. An elected official is elected by the voters to a specific term. With the city council, that is, for a four-year term. If the elected official wishes to seek reelection and the voters make the decision to re-elect that individual, he or she will serve for another four years. Every four years, the voters get to decide who will represent them on the city council. This isn't a social club where everybody gets a chance. This is something that the voters decide, and it's their decision. To set an arbitrary time limit on the voter's choice is unfair to the voters. You today should not be telling the voters of tomorrow who they cannot vote for. If the majority of the voters like what is going on in their city and wish to re-elect someone who they think is doing a good job, that should be their choice, not yours. If the voters choose the known over the unknown, that's their choice to make, not yours. Having a four-year break isn't going to change the, having the incumbent term because four years, anything we do today will be remembered for a long, long time. So I think that break isn't necessarily going to, if that's your issue, isn't going to take care of that. I'd like to answer some of Mr. Tremblay's comments that he's made tonight and the letter he sent to the local newspapers. He lists two cities, as well as the County Board of Supervisors, as having successfully implemented term limits. Thousand Oaks, Ventura, and the Board of Supervisors have indeed instituted term limits. Interestingly enough, already long-term members of those agencies introduced that or supported it, and none of them have turned out, termed out yet. So it is yet to be determined how successful that concept has been. The Board of Supervisors first imposed term limits in two thousand and seven, and I believe Steve Bennett last year was elected to his final term. So the verdict is still out on how successful this has been. As for the state of California, having witnessed our state legislature before and after term limits, I believe it is one of the worst things that happened to our state government. Sacramento was run by lobbyists and staff members, and many elected representatives moved from one office to another to another. Many, knowing they don't have long in office, pushed through some of their pet projects and some of the worst ideas for the state, and then agreed to other members' prep projects to get their wishes through. This is particularly problematic as they often aren't there long enough to have to deal with the results of their decisions, and more often than not, the unintentional consequences of the new laws. Mr. Tremblay states term limits enhance city government so that new council members can bring fresh ideas and perspectives to the council. New ideas for the sake of new ideas is not necessarily a good thing, particularly when brought forth without an understanding of the city or the government processes under which the state and local governments must operate. I have watched cities bounce back and forth as council members change frequently. What sounds like a good idea may turn out to be a disaster. Then they swing the other way, and then the other, and never seem to find stability. There is usually a constant change in city staff that follows, which also adds to the instability. A member of our community can get involved and offer new ideas all the time. There are many organizations within our community where an individual can get involved and better our community. The city has committees to serve on. Any member of the public can bring forth ideas and comments, both positive and negative. The five members of our city council are elected to represent the public, and every member of the public has an opportunity to have their voice heard. They call, they write, they attend city council meetings, they can attend city events. Local government is closest to the people and held more accountable by the people. We live and work in the community and don't head off to Sacramento or Washington. No matter where we go, we interact with the citizens of our community. An example of this city council giving everyone the opportunity to be heard is the night we began a meeting at five o'clock PM and stayed and listened until five o'clock in the morning so that every single person had the opportunity to have their voice heard. Mr. Tremblay states good candidates don't come forward because they lack name recognition to be elected when running against incumbents. First, Mr. Tremblay, I would remind you that you ran against two incumbents and were elected. And I do not believe your position on term limits got you elected. And if so, I might remind you that Mr. Kildy opposed term limits and received almost half again as many votes. There are indeed many people in our community who would probably make very, very good council members. However, many of these people have no desire to serve in that capacity and would rather serve in other ways. Many are far too busy with their own families and work, and for many, when they realize the time involved, the responsibility you assume, and the criticism you must endure, they decide not to put themselves in that position. There have been some who have run for city council with no idea what the job entails and have been glad in the end that they weren't elected. And there have been some who have run for the office that the voters have recognized would probably not be successful or represent their ideals. Just because someone wants to be a city council member does not mean they should be elected to give them their chance. The voters need to decide who they want to elect to represent them, and they should not be limited in their choice. Mr. Tremblay implies that an incumbent having name recognition is a bad thing and keeps good people from running. In most cases, particularly in a town our size, the voters want to elect someone they know or have heard about. In a community our size, it does not and should not take a lot of money to fund a campaign, unlike higher offices. Someone can be elected if they're willing to work hard for the job and gain that name recognition. One should not expect serving on the city council to be their first stop in gaining that name recognition. Hopefully, a candidate runs to serve their community and simply not as a stepping stone to a higher office. If you want to gain, gain name recognition, you need to get started, you need to get involved, work for your community, prove yourself. As I mentioned earlier, there are a lot of ways to get involved in your community and have your voice heard. We need good people who get out and work for the community. It is really easy to complain about what's happening and a lot harder to get out and work to make a difference. When I first ran for public office on our local school board, I ran against three incumbents and was elected. In fact, I came in first. How did I get elected? I worked hard. I didn't take someone's place because they were termed out. There are many benefits in having long-term seasoned council members able to deal with a huge variety of issues. There is a benefit to having council members with experience and giving them the ability to represent the city on regional and state boards and committees. To have a constant turnover in council members will diminish the city's influence in regional and state issues. I could go on and on, but ultimately, to sum it up, every year, the voters get to decide what they want to have happen in their city and if they want to change. I do not support imposing term limits on local city councils and would not support having the council place this measure on the ballot. To have the council place the measure on the ballot would apply to many that the council supports it. If they didn't want it, why would they, they'd put it on the ballot? That is what a lot of people would think. There is, of course, the mechanism that we've heard about to put a measure on the ballot, and so if the competing measure to have a three-year term wants to also go out and collect signatures, they certainly can do that. I do hope that if it does hit the ballot, that the voters look at it and think about the issue on a local level and not let the dysfunction at the state and federal level guide their vote. So I guess to sum all that up, if you can't tell, I do not favor term limits at the local level.
Mr. Morgan?
Well, I'm one of those that says someday, soon, not later, but I will not be running again, and maybe the next term, because I want to see the desal plant finished. And that's one of the things that we do. We've become the twenty-third best place to live in the United States of cities under three hundred thousand, and that wasn't done by a bunch of people that were newbies. It took a lot of experience and a lot of time. It took, how many years did it take us to do this? Ten, twelve years?
Oh, no.
It's taken us a long time to get this accomplished, and it took experience, it took good staff being appointed, and that's very important for this board because we've appointed some of the best staff in the county, and I can, I can bet you on that one. And so we, we've done a good job of making us safe in Camarillo. Secondly, I thought we had a system in place. Every four years, we have to run, and we've run against a lot of people in the last three, four terms, a lot of people. But when they were asked about, I heard new ideas, new ideas, they're asked about new ideas at Leisure Village, I'll never forget that. There were no new ideas coming from anyone. And so to show the public what you have, you've got to show them what you can do and how involved you are in the community, not just by name. We can't be compared with Oxnard, Ventura, other cities have term limits, because we're not them, number one. They've made some mistakes, there's some problems going on, there's recalls going on in Oxnard and other places that might have problems. We're not those people. That's why we're one of the best places to live. Like I said, Karen.
That's why I wrote mine down.
I don't, I know, but I heard yours and I went, gosh, I was going to say that. I don't want to say the same things. So I'm not, that was a very good presentation, by the way. And I think that with this council board, we've got one of the better councils that we've had in the history of this, of this city. And right now, if you ask anyone in Camarillo, oh, no, we love Camarillo, you'll get that everywhere. How many times people tell us, you guys helped bring Cavalier there, oh, we love that. So I think the council has done a job of trying to represent the people in the city and what our desires are. The cities are, the city is almost finished. Within the next few years, the city's going to be complete as far as the, you know, the zoned areas inside the city, inside our general plan. So it's going to be, in a few years, it's going to be a city, a city council maintaining the city, basically. And again, I can't support this because I think if you've done a good job, and Tony put it in his words, he didn't want to not be able to bring someone back who has done a good job. I heard him say that. And I, I feel the same way. If you're doing a good job, then why fire someone? You're, it's people in the other areas that may not be in that same job. Yes, maybe they can need to be replaced, but do it through the election. Again, I'm, I'm all for not, I'm not supporting that being placed on the ballot.
Okay. Jan did say a lot of what I had planned to say, but I'm going to go ahead and read what I had to say anyway. Winston Churchill once said, however beautiful the strategy, you should occasionally look at the results. And that's the way I feel about term limits. Just look at the state of California. In my opinion also, what began as get Willie turned out to be the worst thing that ever happened to the state of California. Initially, people in the assembly were limited to three terms or six years, while people in the senate were limited to two terms or eight years. It gave a whole lot more people a chance to be a senator or an assembly person, but it was not good for the state. In order to get elected, each person had to promise to do a lot of things. Government does work slowly, and by the time all those things got done, those terms were up, and there was nobody around to be held responsible for what had happened. Two years to three years before anybody was termed out, they were no longer interested in their current elected position but looking at what they could be elected to next. Maximum terms were more recently lengthened, and the jury's still out on how it will work. As well, it's how it's going to work in the county and the cities because, as Jan pointed out, we haven't had time to see yet. What has been lost is anybody's long-term vision for the state of the, or the people of California, I'm going to repeat that. What has been lost is anybody's long-term vision for the state of California or the people who live in it, and that's a real shame. Let's look locally. It took many, many years to develop plans and find financing for the Camarillo Public Library. The council members had a vision, and without having any idea how we were going to pay for it, we went through the exercise, exercises to plan a new, larger library. After several years of planning, the state put a library bond out to be voted on by the people. By the time it passed, we were ready to go. Our plans were pretty much done. We were the first award made from that bond issue and still, to date, the largest that has been made for any library. And that was because we all, we had a stable council with a unified vision for a Camarillo library, and we were willing to keep staff focused on that goal. A more recent example is the desalinization plant. We've worked on that project for more than fifteen years. All of us up here have a vision of making Camarillo less dependent upon state water. All of us have learned a great deal about water, and we hope that very soon the project will receive final approvals from state and county agencies so we can begin construction. Again, that is happening because council members were stable, had time to learn all the issues related to water supply and quality, and who kept staff focused on the goal. If we had new members every two years who were more interested in satisfying short-term promises than in looking at long-term needs of the city, the vision of water independence could very well have been lost. Understanding the issues. When a person is first elected, as I said before, he or she has many things he or she promised to get done. Of course, one person cannot get anything done. It takes a vote of three to do anything. But those things are sometimes called fresh ideas, but the fact is that those are usually smaller things. The large, long-term issues remain, and believe me, it takes years for a person to grasp the ins and outs of issues such as sewage treatment, law enforcement, street maintenance, solid waste, water treatment, and the list goes on. A council member must learn a lot of detail, understanding the laws, regulations, and processes that other government agencies have in order for our city to operate. No one learns all these things quickly. It takes relationships to get the stuff done, and those relationships of trust also take years to build. Camarillo is respected all over the county because it operates so well. I believe it's the best-run city in the state, I really do. Look at the way we went from being stone-broke to having enough money to do the projects we need to be done and that we want to be done, as well as having savings for a rainy day. We have the best library around, no question about that. We have the best maintained streets around. Just go to Ventura and look at their streets, or Oxnard and look at their streets. We proactively maintain our lines for water distribution and sewage collection. We also proactively have a, a system of maintaining our streets. We do many other things that cities don't have the money to do but wish they could. I don't believe we need to fix something that's not broken. All that being said, and considering the proposition on the table and the other proposition, I believe that this one should be put up so the people can decide whether they want term limits or not. So I will support putting Mr. Tremblay's bill, or his proposal, on the November ballot, but in November, I don't want anybody to be surprised that I do not support the concept of term limits. Okay, Mr. Tremblay, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I do, Madam Mayor. If I can provide somewhat brief, I'll try to make it brief.
Yeah, because the rest of us have all gone long.
No, you have, and I, and I appreciate, I appreciate the council members' thoughtful comments. I think it's fair to say that we, and each of us, come at this, and certainly I come at this from a very different perspective, and my proposal, my measure was made with respect. It's not, I, not in intention in any way as a referendum against the council, doesn't diminish what this council and this city has accomplished for many years. Just to be, to respond very briefly to, to some of the comments, first of all, I agree that elections are the ultimate term limits. Elections are the ultimate decider, but I don't view it in that narrow prism. I view it as a issue, and that is, how do you attract the best candidates possible and at the same time increase the opportunities to bring new perspectives to the council? And those new perspectives can be both with respect to short-term as well as long-term issues. I understand how experience and institutional knowledge are important. I value those. I certainly value those. My response to that is that I also view new ideas and new perspectives as equally valuable. And my experience, having run only the one time, is that council candidates typically bring valuable expertise and good ideas and homework on city issues. And typically, my expectation would be that with the institution of term limits, you would have a balance of members who are quite experienced, and then a number of members who are quite experienced, together with a number of members who are quite experienced, together with a number of members who are not as experienced, but just as knowledgeable in their own right, and just as enthusiastic, and just as infused with their own ideas from both a short-term and a long-term perspective on how this city should be run. And it is a well-run city, very professionally managed, but everyone brings their own unique ideas to, to the table. In terms of the successful implementation and the comment with respect to that, my response back to that is, this is, this is in my, as I said in my remark, opening remarks, this is a good government's measure. I simply disagree. And I also think that there are folks who are out there who would want to run, but the advantages of incumbency stand in their way, and it makes it very difficult for them to do it. And I don't want to be presumptuous in any way. I don't know what's inside people's heads, but I know that that does raise, does raise an issue for folks. I do respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Morgan, in terms of no new ideas coming from anyone. My experience has been during the campaign that there were good ideas articulated by each of the candidates in the campaign that, that I ran. I didn't mention Oxnard in any way. I'm not attempting to equate Camarillo with Oxnard in any way. What I'm attempting to do is to say, look, these, the same measure that I proposed has been implemented in both Ventura and Thousand Oaks, as well as with the county board of supervisors, and I believe it's the right way to go. I would also say, just with respect to the state legislature, I think the state legisla, I was working in the state legislature when term limits was initially adopted.
I'm sorry.
Showing my age way back in, in the late 1970s, early 1980s. And I think the state legislature is entirely distinguishable from local government. And what occurs at the state legislature is entirely distinguishable from local government. These are nonpartisan positions as a city council member, and frankly, I'm glad for that. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be serving in a, in a nonpartisan role. I also think that new members on the council can support ideas and initiatives that, efforts that have been brought forward. For example, the desalter, which I think is a terrific project, and I support it wholeheartedly. So that's my response.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I'll make a motion that the, that the council provide direction to staff to prepare a resolution to place a city council term limits ordinance consistent with the proposal which I have made on the November 6, 2018, general municipal election ballot.
Is there a second?
I have, may I say something first, because what you said kind of affected me a little bit. Because if it gets on the ballot as a five-year, or two, five-year, or four-year terms, that's absolutely wrong. You get no experience whatsoever to take anything through, and you're going to be run by staff. Let's put it that way. Sacramento is run by staff and parties right now. And so we need, we need to have some people who are going to gain a little more experience in the two, four-year terms. I don't necessarily agree with what we're doing with, with what you're proposing, but if we have another one on the ballot that says three terms, it's better than two terms.
Are you planning to second it?
I'm going to second it.
I'd like to make a comment to that if I may. Mr. Morgan, I would ask you to not be afraid of the one that's out there on the two years, because I think that one would be very easy to argue. And I think what they, the way they have it written will be very easy to argue, and I believe that people won't support it. So I would not be afraid of that one. I would do what's right for the city and not allow them to basically blackmail you into putting something on the ballot that you didn't initially support.
Well, I'm going to say right now.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask you to vote now. Motion carries 3-2 with Mrs. McDonald and Mr. Kildie voting against. At this time, we will recess to a closed session, but I have to first ask the city attorney to give us all the words for the closed sessions, and there is one under the special meeting as well.
We have on the regular session, closed sessions. These are all real property matters. The stock building supply, Chamber of Commerce building, and the proposed desalter. The details regarding each of those properties are identified in the agenda. We also have a special meeting, closed session, another real property matter. That one is the Hotel Conference Center, and the parties that are negotiating on that one are identified in the agenda. And under all of these, it's price and terms of payment.
Okay. We will stand in recess shortly after the closed session. Part of it at least, we will be in a study session looking at the mid-year budget review. And then we'll be back at 7:30 to continue the regular meeting.
Adjourn the special meeting so I don't forget to do it later. Now, we will continue with the regular meeting of the Camarillo City Council. I ask the record to reflect that all council members are present, and I'll ask Mr. Tremblay to please lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Next is public comments. I have three cards. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak to the council, please fill out a blue card and hand it to the city clerk. That's on an item not on the agenda. Actually, you can fill out a card on an item on the agenda and hand it to the city clerk as well if you'd like. First card I have is from David Mormon.
Mrs. Craven, as you're aware from my previous special appearance before the council, January 24, 2018, before the City of Camarillo City Council herein after to be known as the city and recognized by me as a corporation, a legal fiction, I acknowledge receipt, I acknowledge receipt of and conditional acceptance of the above referenced offers parking citations. You guys know those because of the information I gave you from the first time I was here. You also got a copy of The Great Controversy, and I believe Steps to Christ, and a few others. I pray that you've been reading The Great Controversy. That book is coming alive as we speak, as I speak to you. I pray that you're reading that book. I also made known to you and the council of my reservation of rights without prejudice made under the Uniform Commercial Code, Section 1308, by declaration via affidavit dated January 8, 2016. Furthermore, I made it known to the city that these offers, parking citations, were commercial in nature and that my terms and what my terms would be to accept and to agree to perform as promised by me, as requested in the city's presentations or presentments. I agreed to present the city either cash, Federal Reserve notes, or a personal check for $70 for both of the presentments citations offered, provided the city a sense to make a one-time donation to the Camarillo Seventh-day Adventist Church specifically to the food pantry located at 3975 Los Postes Road in the amount of $70. I also made mention to you that if you want to dismiss those two tickets, I'll pay the pantry the $70 myself so you won't have to, and we can just cut out the middleman. It's up to you what you want to do, but I'm not paying your parking tickets. So, I have the acceptance right here, the check in here for $70. Do you have the check for $70 so I can give it to the pantry? If you don't, I'll give these to the clerk. You're in dishonor.
Okay, we, this is not on the agenda, so we cannot make any decisions tonight.
Well, you have my telephone number, you have my post office box. You can get ahold of me at any time on the phone, but here's...
Okay, the clerk will take your paperwork.
Here's your dishonor, right there. God bless you people.
Next speaker is Matthew Lorimer. Mr. Lorimer, you have two cards in here tonight, and your name's different, supposed to be different every card, don't you remember?
I'm in the witness protection program.
Since you've moved to Texas or wherever you moved, you've forgotten that you were supposed to change your name every time. So, I'm going to call you Matt this time.
You can call me anything. I'm okay with that. You know, last, you guys talked about term limits. You said candidates didn't have good ideas. I ran for city council a few times, as you know, and that senior center, the city, didn't fund it one bit at all, okay? The air conditioning didn't work that good, the lighting is poor, the bathrooms are not wide enough. Finally, we did a study, spent quite a bit of money on that study, and you know, the study's pretty clear, we need a new senior center. You need to work with the park district, and we need to get it done, not do like the firehouse, and we're still talking about selling it, okay? It should happen, those people need it, they've been paying taxes for many years, it's time to step up to the plate, ladies and gentlemen. You're either 100% in or you're 100% out, but there's no more excuses anymore. Senior center, we need a new senior center, it should be built, and it should be the best. You know, the Council of Agent Ventura County, they list Camarillo as the number one as a senior center. It should be just more than just another senior center, it should be the best in the county. They should stamp it, while spending the money and putting computers and everything else. So, I hope you will follow through with that. The next thing I want to talk about is, you talked about term limits. You know, you said how good the city's run. You know something? You've been lucky. The Ventura County Star has not reported the news in the city like the Acorn. The Star has basically given a blank check and not reported the news, okay? A lot of things have happened. We had the Fiesta scandal, we could go on about how the former city manager cost us a lot of money. In fact, by the way, Mr. Purek should maybe give us a number of how much money the city has paid out in lawsuits, okay? Those are things you don't want to discuss. If you're going to discuss the good, you should discuss everything. There's been a lot. Habitat for Humanity didn't have a license, all right? You gave them a pass, okay? They didn't follow the rules, they took money for years. The Fiesta Association, what new rules are in place? We're still waiting for that. You're giving money to this organization, I think it's important. And you said volunteer work is important. You know, Kevin, if that passes, and Jan, you know, you always got the police department, you can roll around doing that, maybe spend some time at the senior center. There's always things for you to do, but you know something? It's not going to hurt to leave and maybe try something else. Maybe you'll leave and you'll find something better, you never know. So, I think it's good that we're going to have term limits, it's important. You know, there's a lot that the city hasn't done. The firehouse, 20 years, and every time the paper talks about it or the city manager says, "Hey, by the way, we're working on negotiations." How many years? Kevin said at the last debate a few years ago, "I said it's going to be 20 years." Kevin, we've got 17 more to go if you get elected and there's not term limits. The point is, things don't always happen in the city, so that's why term limits are important. Thank you.
Next speaker is Terry Bray.
Good evening, Terry Bray, 35-plus-year resident of the city of Camarillo. I have provided copies to all council members and city attorneys, city manager, of two different things. One thing that I would like to make sure that TV Land knows about is that during my litigation and having to do with the remodel of my mobile home by Habitat for Humanity, who was compensated with federal funds through the city, who is the gatekeeper of those funds, I had to get a second inspection by Housing and Community Development for that litigation because the first inspector was no longer with HCD. In that inspection, there were 13, 13 construction code violations. Habitat for Humanity is now being fined $2,366 for those violations. It'll be interesting to find out if that violation fine is going to be in Habitat's name or is it going to be like the California State, how it was, CSLB, California State Licensing Board fine that was originally $7,500 that was somehow negotiated to $3,500 for operating without a license for 34 years, and that citation was put in the paid employee's name, the director, Mr. Steve Dwyer, yet that check was by Habitat for Humanity that paid for that. So, it's going to be interesting what HCD is going to do, if they're going to throw Mr. Dwyer under the bus and make it harder to find the violation by the general public. And I found it comical that Habitat is going to be doing that construction on Arneal Road and under the same direction as the people who oversaw the remodel in my mobile home that obviously wasn't paying attention to what needed to be done. Also, too, I'd like to know what is holding up the authorization of my community housing CHS application. I verified with the director of the program that they are waiting for the city to approve my application. I went to the expense of sending a certified registered letter to Mr. Vacca. That was mailed on January 20th, received by the department on the 22nd of January. I asked for a written deadline by January 31st. I've received no contact whatsoever. The contact with CHS was provided to me by the city as an alternative to Habitat, and that scope of work does not include anything having to do with the work that was done in my bathroom by Habitat. So, at this time, I'd like to ask the council to ask Mr. Vacca, what's the reason, what's the holdup since I'm not being responded to? And by the way, the director of CHS confirmed that my application's current, it's not expired, and I do not have to reapply with them. They're waiting for you.
Okay. We will ask Mr. Vacca to get in touch with you within the next three days.
And will that be in writing?
If you'd like your answer within the next three days, I could ask him to call you, but otherwise, I don't, can't guarantee the mail.
Well, what I would appreciate is an email. He does have my email address, and so that would be sufficient, doesn't have to be something in snail mail.
Email would be fine.
Email would be great.
I just have one correction. I think that Habitat for Humanity is not going to be dealing with the property on Arneal Road but on Bailey, Berry Street.
Or Bailey or...
Berry, I said it wrong.
Berry Daley, whatever.
Okay, just, just, just a little correction for anybody listening.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the correction, I'm sorry that I didn't quote it correctly. And by the way, all the work that was done at Casa del Norte Mobile Home Park by Habitat, no inspections were done on that property, and the same unlicensed subcontractor that worked on my house worked on a senior citizens at that complex, and that was all paid with federal funds.
Okay, thank you. I have no more cards. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the city council on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we're going to move forward to the public hearings. The first public hearing is a resolution approving tentative tract 5979, PEGH Investments. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. David Mo will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Craven and city council members. PEG Investment requests approval of tentative tract 5979 to combine eight existing lots into four proposed lots and shorten the length of Camino Creo to comply with conditions of approval IPD, of IPD 390 through 393. The public hearing was advertised for tonight's meeting with notices sent to the property within 600 feet. It was posted at the city hall and on the city's website and published in the Ventura County Star. The project site is located in the southeast portion of the city, north of US Highway 101, west of the Cane Hill Creek in Mission Oaks Business Park, and highlighted on the screen in green. The project site was recently utilized by Cavalia for their multimedia equestrian show under temporary use permit 18. Here's a view of the street on Google Maps, or a view from the street, excuse me.
It looked better with the tents.
This is how you probably remember it.
Oh, there you go, okay.
The Camarillo General Plan land use map designates the property for industrial uses. So, as you can see right here, the site is right here. Primary access to the property will be from Camino Creo, with the general plan circulation element identifies portion of Verdugo Way as a major collector, and then as it moves further east, it is designated as a minor collector. The zoning designation for the property is limited manufacturing, or LM. This is the existing tract map for the area. As you can see, the, there's five lots up here and then three lots down here, and then you can see Camino Creo come in here and kind of droop down to the south here. And this is their proposed map. So, the tentative tract 5979 proposes to combine those eight lots that I just showed you and then shorten the length of Camino Creo to comply with approval of industrial permits previously approved. And there's a taste of the, the architecture, the heritage zone of some of the IPDs that were approved. This one in particular is IPD 390. In 2010, staff prepared the initial study in accordance with SEQA for the IPDs. Based on the information contained in the initial study, the city prepared a mitigated negative declaration, number 2010-29. After holding a public hearing, the planning commission determined the IPDs would not have a significant adverse effect upon the environment and approved the MND on September 6, 2011. Accordingly, there has not been any substantial change to the project description in the MND, and no further environmental review is required. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on January 16, 2018, where they considered the tentative tract 5979 for the subject site. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the planning commission concurred with request and adopted resolution number 2018-2 with a unanimous vote recommending approval of tentative tract 5979 to the city council, subject to the recommended conditions of Staff's recommendation is a motion to adopt resolution approving tentative tract 5979, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions of Mr. Mo? Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. Just to let the public know, because it's such the topic whenever we talk about any kind of development, let them know the issue on water, what the difference in water use between what's being proposed versus what was, has already been approved. If there is any.
So, what has been approved has already been approved.
That's what I mean.
So, really what's happening here is typically with development, you have the tentative tract map, and then the environmental review and all that stuff goes on with the project. Well, in this situation, it's actually flipped. So, the project was already approved, and the water was already looked back at in 2012 and with the project, and at that time, it was a different, we had a different situation with water, and there was not any mitigation for water at that time.
Okay, but...
Madam Mayor, I believe the, what's being proposed with the revised tract map will essentially be about the same amount of square footage development, so the water use will essentially be the same.
Be the same. I think that's what I'm looking at. So, what we're doing tonight really isn't going to change the need for water, water use, it's just changing basically the size of the buildings is what's going to happen.
The building, the size of the buildings will stay the same, it's actually the size of the lots.
The lot, okay.
And the water is serviced by Camrosa.
It doesn't matter.
And they've approved, and they approved the use of that water.
No, I'm just wanting to know the difference. So, the really bottom line answer to my question, there really isn't a difference between what was there now.
Mr. Morgan, I saw next.
We, at one time, we had a problem with potential flooding. It was flood path or flood zone, I can't remember what it was, but do they have to play flood insurance there for that?
I, okay, I...
I don't know if it's changed since those days, that's why I was wondering, because I know it was in that, that zone.
Valerie Drager, Trillia Development, represents PEGH Investments LLC. What we did back when we got in, got caught up in that mapping with FEMA is we paid our engineer to do a focused map amendment to FEMA's map and got not only us out of the flood zone, but part of the senior center up north of us also was removed from the flood zone, and that was all recorded, and the city has the information.
Okay, because I had not heard, I know, I go there occasionally to that, to Leisure Village, you're talking about Leisure Village.
Leisure Village, not all of it was removed, but a portion of it was removed with our application, and then there was a small portion that was still not taken care of.
Okay.
I had gone to their HOA and asked them if they wanted to financially participate when I was doing mine to try and solve the problem with the rest of their properties, and they did not want to do that at that time. So, I just did our property, which they benefited, some of their properties benefited from.
I just needed definition, because I never got that, how it happened, but I get told, oh, we're out of it, and they're out of it, and they're not. Okay.
We're, we're out of it, and we're the ones that paid to get out of it.
Very good.
Is that all your questions?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Tremblay.
Question two.
Okay, Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Okay, so, we've got eight existing lots, and they want to go down to four. So, why would they want to do this? What's the footprint? What's, what's, what's happening with that?
So, basically, what they did is they had their industrial building approved, basically spanning over several lots, so now we're kind of cleaning that up. We're removing those lot lines and making it one lot instead of, for example, three lots.
So, marketability improves marketability, does it...
Well, really, they could, this is a condition of approval of, for their IPD, and they really couldn't even pull a permit until they satisfied this condition. So, you can't build a building over a property line.
But furthermore, based on the property owner's market analysis, they feel that this is a better plan for their development of the industrial center.
In the what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Better plan for development of this industrial center.
Okay. So, it just kind of enhances in today's market what they potentially couldn't do then, perhaps they can do more amenable today?
Yes. The original tract map would have had smaller buildings, but they feel that the larger lots with larger buildings are more marketable in the sector that they're trying to accommodate for.
Mr. Tremblay.
Just a couple of questions, complimentary to what Mr. Kildie asked about. First of all, let's start with the acronym. Tell me what IPD stands for, so everybody knows.
Industrial Plan Development.
Okay, thank you. So, really, the way that I read the staff report is, aside from the approval of the tentative tract map, the going from eight to four is simply a way to satisfy the condition of approval of existing IPDs.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, so, it's a discretionary, I'm going to look at both you and Mr. Vacca on this, this is a discretionary action for the council to take, but in many ways, it's, I view it almost as ministerial in a way.
That's generally correct. Typically, you have a tract map at the same time as an industrial plan development permit, and industrial plan development permit deals with site planning and architecture predominantly and the actual placement of buildings. And here, in a way, we almost have the cart before the horse. So, the map is a cleanup map, and they redesign the buildings because they feel they're more marketable.
Okay, and this is from six years ago.
Yes.
2012. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. I have two cards to speak on this. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak to us on this issue, please fill out a blue card and hand it to the clerk. First card is Valerie Drager.
Good evening, mayor and council. Valerie Drager, Trillia Development. I just wanted to further confirm that we did do a market research, and the size of buildings, that we needed larger buildings down there than those tiny, small lots would allow. And then, I had at one point in time discussed with the city deposit...
And then I had at one point in time discussed with the city to possibly do lot line adjustments, but we all got together and decided that that wasn't really a possibility, there were too many lot lines, and that the city really felt that it was better that I just do a map. And so that's kind of, I originally was going another path, but it didn't work out, so here I am. And just to let you know what's going on down in the business park, we currently have GSMS, who is outgrowing their space, we have the sheriffs, who's outgrowing their space, and Perfect Promotions, that are outgrowing their space. So I have three tenants, and then Haas Automation is in 312 Balboa, they're outgrowing their space. So I've got four tenants in my buildings alone that are outgrowing their space. So the 88,000 square foot building is, in my opinion, needed in that marketplace, and we're going to build it spec. So hopefully, we'll be able to fill it up shortly after breaking ground, because most of the tenants that we're talking to, until we break ground, they're not willing to make a decision. So that's why we want to get moving on this. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, Valerie, I appreciate you being here. Spec, does that mean, what do you mean by spec?
Spec means I don't have a tenant signed up to move in today.
But you got an idea about how much space you may need if you get a potential?
That's right. And it's not just the space, it's also looking at the numbers and making sure the rents work in the community, the comps for the rents. You can't build a space that's going to be 30% over market. So it's a combination of the size of the building, the cost of the building, and then looking at the rents and making sure the rents will support the possibility of getting a tenant in the space.
Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald?
I have a question, but I have two comments. One, I appreciate you doing this, and I hope this is a sign that we're going to get some good jobs back and grow that business area. And two, I just wanted to thank you for bringing Cavalier to us and being a part of that. You really stepped up and helped something really special happen for our community.
I have to say that everybody at the city, it was a joint effort, and it was one of the quickest things we've ever done. And it was very unique. I've never done anything like that, and I'm not sure the city had, so we all got together and everybody put their heads together and figured out how to make it work. And I thank everybody at the city for their help, because I wouldn't have known how to do it without them.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Morgan?
Just to comment, I got my question, but I want you to know that even Cavalier wished they could come back at that spot every year.
I know. And I even had Circus Olay call me up and say that they had heard that Cavalier was there, and they wanted to be there too in two years. So I guess we could have put one show on every couple of years or every year, but that's, we need to develop jobs, they're permanent jobs.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott Yules.
Good evening, Mayor Craven, council members. Scott Yules with Delain Engineering. I'm here with, representing Triliad. We prepared the tentative map for this project, and just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any, that's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to us on this issue? I thought you were coming back to speak to us, with a different name, maybe, I don't know. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll open it up for the council. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll get to the right page.
I'll make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving tentative tract 5979, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and thank them again for Cavalier.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next, under departmental items, a 2017 general plan referral rescission Kmart, excuse me, Kmart. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. So this general plan amendment referral is in association with the Kmart property. On February 22 of last year, the city council did authorize the processing of a general plan amendment application.
Joe, could you move that microphone up?
Sure, is that better?
There you go, I think that's going to be better.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So on February 22 of last year, the city council did authorize the processing of a general plan amendment application, and the request was to change the land use designation from general commercial to commercial mixed use over an approximate four acre site where the existing 1,000, excuse me, 110,000 square foot Kmart store is currently located and currently operating. And that is within the existing 15 and a half acre Central Plaza Shopping Center. That's located at the northeast corner of Ponderosa Drive and Arneel Road. Mark Pettit's the architect, in association with Lotterback and Associates, and he did begin public outreach in December of 2017. He reserved the Camarillo Library Boardroom, and he invited neighboring property owners to attend informational meetings on Wednesday, December 13, and Saturday, December 16, to dialogue with the community about the concepts and ideas that are planned for that Kmart property. To date, we have not received a formal general plan amendment application, and at the December 13, 2017, and January 24, 2018 city council meetings, council member Tony Trembley asked that this general plan amendment referral request be brought back to the city council at a future meeting for consideration of rescission, and that's why it's here this evening. So this aerial photograph depicts the Central Plaza Shopping Center, and the Kmart site is hashed in yellow, and it's just south of Fiesta. And so the overall shopping center is at the northeast corner of Ponderosa and Arneel. So the surrounding land uses are predominantly residential to the north, and to the west, and to the east, and then we have commercial and office uses to the south. This is the conceptual plan that was submitted in December of 2016 with the original general plan amendment referral application, and it shows conversion of the Kmart store to predominantly apartment units that are adjacent to Fiesta Drive, ringed by commercial service and restaurant uses in the shaded purple color towards the parking field of the existing shopping center. So the existing general plan land use designation for the property is commercial, and the existing zoning is commercial plan development. And the agenda report provided three options for the city council's consideration. One would be for the council to make a motion to allow the general plan amendment referral to continue through the process. One would be a motion to rescind the general plan amendment referral. And then third option would be to provide alternative direction to staff regarding the general plan amendment. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions of staff on this?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, Joe, I just want to make sure I'm right. One of the options for us is to rescind the general plan referral as it was submitted. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Any other questions?
I have questions.
Mrs. McDonald?
Just to clarify, this one is different than the one we heard in our last meeting, in that this is only the Kmart building.
That's correct.
Looks like it's more businesses than Kmart on the map. Well, he's going to talk to us, maybe he can answer that.
Well, let me, I'll ask my questions of Mark, then, rather than staff.
I have a card from him.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay. I have one card to speak to us on this, Mark Pettit. So you can speak, and then anticipate some questions.
Great. Good evening. My name is Mark Pettit, resident of Camarillo, with Lotterback and Associate Architects. First off, I just wanted to come and make some clarifications, and maybe a little bit of history. Last February, we came here and were able to get the referral. Starting in March, we started talking with neighbors, we talked and met with 17 neighbors, had ongoing conversations, starting in March through June, late June. In July, we found out that Vons was interested in going into the site. During that time, from July to November, we had at least 12 additional conversations with neighbors multiple times, and through March and through into November, we actually met with the city five different times, staff over the counter in meetings. So we did not start the process in December. That's not true. We started, and we had a long, detailed process through. However, since Vons came in, we didn't have anything until Vons made the deal just a couple days, week before Thanksgiving. Once we found that out, we quickly got a venue, and were able to work with the city and book a place in December, and had neighborhood meetings. Those neighborhood meetings were not design charrettes, they were purely updating and contacting, discussing with more people. After those meetings and during those meetings, we had an additional 18 people that were not at the hearings or those meetings that we were in conversation with, either phone or emails. So talking with staff earlier, they wanted us to kind of put a plan together, kind of like the one that you saw, but we just said that we weren't going to do that until we had design charrettes with the neighbors. That's what the neighbors wanted, that's what we want. So that's why there was no design or concept for two, three weeks ago when we were here, that we wanted to be able to have that. No matter what happens, we're going to continue to have meetings with the neighbors, we're scheduling meetings right now for the design charrette, and we'll keep you posted on how that goes.
And we're really talking two things, because you're talking with the neighbors on the whole 15 and a half acres, as I understand it, or are you just talking on the four acres? Because they get interwoven.
They do. Originally, up through to December, we were talking about the referral.
Of the four acres.
Correct. However, in what happened in November with Vons moving, they create a hole in the center. And prior to that, I believe in early October, we met with, when we thought this was going to happen, and we felt, well, what opportunities are there to take a look at the whole center and not just the four acres? Because the intent of the developer is to remodel the entire 15 and a half acres.
But your upcoming design charrettes will be on the 15 and a half acres, not the four acres?
They are going to be on everything, yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to distinguish. And so tonight, this item is on the four acres.
That's correct, and I just wanted to kind of update some things on...
And I interrupted you in your time, so we'll give you a little extra time.
But we'll keep you posted on how we go ahead and deal with it. We had a list of 50-some-odd likes and concerns and wants and don't-wants that we got from the neighbors. We had them review that list, edit it, do whatever, and then we provided that list to the city back, I believe in the end of December or beginning of January, to Jackie. And so I think we've done our best as we can, and we'll continue to work on it.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mrs. McDonald, you started out.
Can you, you gave us some various numbers. Do you happen to have a total of the number of neighbors that you have spoken with?
Oh, gosh, if we add them all up, I would imagine there's close to 100.
So 100 different ones, not the same ones over and over?
Yes, 100 different ones.
So you have had outreach, even though some people tried to make it sound like you hadn't? Okay.
And it wasn't only the neighbors in that immediate area that we noticed. We had people from across Arneel, we had people from Mission Oaks, we had people from Las Poses, so it wasn't just that neighborhood.
And can you tell us whether, is Vons a sure thing now, or...
They have a letter of intent, so nothing's final, as we like to say, until they physically go through the process, the application process. And we're working with them right now on what that building wants to be, based on comments that we got back from the neighbors, but the next step, dealing with the neighbors, will kind of help us lay out where the traffic is, where the landscape is. Remember, we want to create areas in front of the Vons for sitting, and maybe a cafe-type outside. So we have a lot of work to do on it, but we're working on that right now, and getting some of their criteria, letting them know what our response was from the neighbors, so that when we meet with the neighbors, we can kind of start to get that design going.
So in your eyes, do you still need this referral to be in place to deal with the Kmart property?
No.
Or you can do without it?
At this point, we're looking at the entire center, so we do not.
You're not looking at four acres.
So you don't even need this?
We do not.
So you could technically just withdraw it?
We can.
And do you have permission to do that?
We've talked with the property owners, and they're open to that, yes. Unfortunately, they've been hit by fires and floods, and have been a little difficult to deal with.
But he doesn't tonight.
Pardon?
You don't have that authority tonight.
I don't have it in writing with me tonight, but I could get that very quickly.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do.
Mr. Kildie, sorry.
Mark, the Kmart building vis-à-vis where Vons is, is the Kmart building larger than what they currently are now?
The Kmart building is about 110,000 square feet. The current Vons is about 27,000, 28,000 square feet.
So it's substantially larger than...
Right, and what the initial indication and the preliminary drawings that we have, which are their standard, Vons standard plans, which we're going to use as a guide only, are anywhere from about 58,000 square foot to 64,000 square feet.
That's kind of the footprint of a market of that size now?
That's correct.
50, what did you say?
About 58,000 to about 64,000.
Okay. Are they, I mean, so many people are kind of downsizing now, are they downsizing that footprint now, or is that about, is that remain pretty much what the market is bearing?
From what I've talked to our client on, that is a strategic operation that they want to have for the city. So I can't tell you if it's typical from city to city, but it's what they feel is appropriate for Camarillo.
It's in the ballpark, then, of what they're looking at?
I believe so. I've seen recent Vons, depending on the space, in the high 4, 40,000s. I really haven't seen too many over 64,000.
And that, that building would, you know, more than adequate for a footprint of potentially that size in?
Right, the approximate four acres, as was mentioned, the 110,000 square foot, this footprint of this 50, I'm going to just say 60,000 approximate, would fit on that property, but it's really up to us and the neighbors on how it fits in, and the configuration, the loading, and entrances, and how the parking moves around it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. Do you plan on taking the Kmart building down and building from scratch, or are you planning on remodeling it?
No, the Kmart building unfortunately is older, it's many, many, multiple codes ago it was built, and so it'll be a brand-new state-of-the-art building and part of that shopping center.
But you won't need any change of zoning, because it's going to...
That's correct. The Vons is something that, you know, once we kind of get input from neighbors, that can go quicker, and they would like it to go quicker, quite honestly.
So I guess from a public relations standpoint, you're actually doing more than you would have to by actually involving the neighbors in how you design the Vons project.
Yes, but I kind of shop there too, so it's...
No, I'm saying that's a good thing. I mean, you're actually going beyond what would be required, because you are trying to make it the neighborhood.
That's correct.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Okay, I think there aren't any more questions.
Thank you.
Okay. This isn't a public hearing, it's a departmental item, so I don't have any other cards, though. Is there anybody else who would, other than staff and a newspaper reporter, perhaps, like to talk to us on this? Okay, I'll open it up to the council. What are your wishes?
I'll go first. It seems to me that from what Mark has just told us, that I'm, the way I understood it was, is that the applicant plans on withdrawing the referral request on this, it's no longer needed, so my personal opinion is, is we allow that to happen, and there's no reason that we have to go on the record of having rescinded this. I think we should just let them do it and follow the course.
Okay, I've heard from one council member. Other council members?
I feel the same way. I mean, why are we waiting? Let's just get rid of it now, so they can proceed on with their new plans.
Why are we waiting? I don't know that anybody, well, you asked that, I don't know that anybody was suggesting we wait.
No, I'm not saying... No, I'm not saying anyone should. I said, that's just a figure of speech. Why wait? Let's go ahead and get rid of it.
Oh, so you want us to...
So, you want to go ahead tonight?
I'd like to motion to rescind it.
I'm confused by what, oh, okay. I got it.
When I say get rid of it, that's rescind.
But what I...
You said you agreed with her and she isn't saying that, so that's what's confusing me, Mr. Morgan.
Well, I thought you said you rescind it.
I'm saying, they're going to withdraw it, why do we have to rescind it? Let them just withdraw it, rather than us having to go on the record as that we rescinded it.
Okay. So, Mr. Morgan would like to...
If we...
Either way, it's gone.
If we say we rescind it tonight, it's over. You don't have to go through all that process.
Okay.
So, I'm going to motion that we rescind it.
Okay, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second? There's a second. Okay, we can discuss after the motion.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Kilde, would you like to speak to the motion?
Let me talk a little bit about this. What's the benefit for doing it one way or the other way, if the end result is going to be the same? Maybe that's a legal question.
I could answer that one. Since the applicant has indicated that they intend to withdraw and he just is waiting to get final authorization for that, your choices are, you can continue this item to your next meeting, and then if you don't have the withdrawal in by the next meeting, you could take action to rescind. I could call that option one. Option two would be that you take the action to rescind now. However, given the comments that I've heard from Mr. Pettit, as well as from the council, it appears that there isn't a need for you to rescind if they're going to voluntarily withdraw. But that doesn't mean you couldn't rescind, it's just that if they've already indicated a willingness to withdraw it, that might be an option you'd want to consider.
I personally think we should wait for them to withdraw, myself.
Mr., let's see, one, two. I think everybody's spoken, so I would say, if we're not going to take action tonight, I would ask that this be, I don't know what you call it, tabled, held over until the next meeting then, because I understand there are rains and floods, but we're talking about somebody's property, and if they can't get the paperwork in by the, before the next council meeting to withdraw, then I would certainly be willing to vote to rescind it.
I think you've got a motion and a second, if I'm not mistaken, so...
Well, everybody's spoken and I'm giving my opinion on...
Understood, understood. So, if what you had just said was the consensus, then that motion could be withdrawn and a substitute motion could be made instead, which would be to continue this item to your next meeting to give them a chance to submit or withdraw.
Yeah, Mr. Morgan, it was your motion.
I didn't get a second.
Yes, you did. You had it.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Tremblay seconded it.
Okay, I'd rather get rid of it tonight and have to continue, continue. If they're going to do it anyway, let's just do the motion that staff's recommending and rescind it now.
Mr. Tremblay, you were the second.
I'll continue my...
He'll continue, your second.
Can I make a comment? I think you misunderstand. This came because Mr. Tremblay asked for it. Staff isn't bringing this and making a recommendation. They're giving us choices. All the applicant has to do is write a letter and ask him to withdraw it. It's not that big a deal. And I would ask that if we don't do it tonight, that we simply say to staff, if you have not received the letter by such and such a day, then you put it on the agenda. But if he brings you a letter next week, then we're done with it. Personally, I would rather go on the record as having the applicant have withdrawn it instead of doing another one that we rescind, but it's my opinion.
Yes.
I really haven't spoken to...
You're on.
No, I turned on the voting button, not the microphone button. And I mean this with all due respect to Mr. Pettit, but I originally brought this. My feeling is that, and I can't help but say this, that the goalposts keep shifting here. And I mean that with all due respect, but there are now three different balls up in the air, realistically, or at least two, if not three, and this is one that there is no chance of moving forward, at least if I'm understanding it correctly, there's at least an LOI that's been, I'm sorry, there's been a letter of intent provided to the developer. I originally brought this for a whole bunch of different reasons that I won't go into this point, but I would rather wait for one concept to come together. The developer is going to be holding charrettes, as I understand it, on the entire fifteen-acre-plus site. I'd rather just rescind this now and be done with it, and then wait for the next item to come, next referral request to come in. That, to me, makes the most sense in terms of proceeding on this expeditiously.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion? Please vote. Motion carries three-two, with Mr. Kilde and Mrs. McDonald dissenting.
May I ask a clarification from staff?
Yes.
It was my understanding in our discussion from last meeting that this group, the owner of the shopping center, did not have to wait until next year to bring forth their request. Is that true?
I know. Typically, we try to have all of the general plan amendment referral requests made at one time in December, but there have been instances, New Urban West at the Camarillo Springs Golf Course is one example, where they came in with a request that was outside of those traditional timeframes. So, I think we would analyze it and look at it, and if we thought it was worthy, we'd bring it to you outside of that December and January timeframe.
And under the circumstances, it doesn't take council action or anything else, staff can do that at their discretion.
Correct.
Because of all that has gone on here?
Yes.
Okay. But it would have to be a pretty complete application.
That's correct.
Well, it can be as much as they feel is complete, and you bring us in and we decide whether it's complete or not. And I also have one question having to do with this. Last meeting, when we were talking about it, I had requested that there be an item, maybe I'll do that under public, but I'll do it now, since we're talking about rescindence, and that one was not on the agenda. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, the applicant and property owner were not available tonight, and the likelihood is that they're available at the soonest is March 28th, and we're still waiting to hear from them. They've both been in and out of state, so obviously, they want to be present for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next item is legal services by Downey Brand to review the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency's groundwater sustainability plans.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. This item is to consider approval of an engagement letter with Downey Brand to provide legal services relating to the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency's Groundwater Sustainability Plans, or GSP. In September 2014, the state of California signed into law the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, S-GMA, or SIGMA, which establishes a framework to bring groundwater-dependent regions into sustainability. SIGMA requires the formation of a locally-controlled groundwater sustainability agencies, or a GSA, which is responsible for developing a GSP to address any overdrafted groundwater basins within its jurisdiction, which is the case under Fox Canyon GMA. The GMA is the region's primary GSA, covering the Auctionard Plain, Pleasant Valley, Las Poses Valley, and Arroyo, Santa Rosa Valley groundwater basins. The GMA is in the process of developing the GSP, and on January 3rd of this year, a ninety-day public review period was opened for the preliminary draft GSP affecting those basins, including Pleasant Valley. Questioned stakeholder input and comments, which are due April 3rd. It's expected that after that review is completed, there'll be another finalization of the GSP, draft GSP, for a second review period, is what's expected, and then subsequent to that, the preparation of the final GSP. Staff recommends retaining Downey Brand to provide legal review of the GSP related to groundwater extractions and any resulting effects on the North Pleasant Valley Groundwater Disalter Project. And Downey Brand will advise the city on options to address potential impacts of the GSP to the city's current groundwater pumping operations and the planned disalter facility. Downey Brand will be held on retainer for an amount not to exceed $25,000 for these legal review services. That completes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Kilde?
Yes, have we used this firm before? Do you know?
They have been involved in the TMDL process that the city has been engaged in in the region, so, yes, we have used their service. I'm not sure of direct, by direct contract, yeah, by direct contract in the past with the city.
Okay.
Any other questions? What are the wishes of the council?
I'd love the approval.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item C under departmental is the mid-year budget report, joint with the Camarillo Sanitary District Board. Would you like to call that order to order?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll go ahead and call that meeting to order at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. You have before you tonight the mid-year budget review adoption. I will, let's see, let's see where we work this one. Okay, thanks. Tonight will be just a brief overview of budget versus actuals for major funds, to include the general fund, capital improvement fund, solid waste fund, transit fund, water funds, the Camarillo Sanitary District funds. We will also provide an overview of the reserve analysis, general fund fiscal forecast, and as we discussed in study session, the community service grants, funding for 2018-19. Summary of all funds, what we'll see here is that the total of all funds expenditures is of 144 million. What we've done is evaluated budget to actuals for all the funds. We'll go in greater detail for the general fund, the capital improvement fund, solid waste, transit, water, sanitary district, and other funds. First, the general fund, we are trending as historical trends, and even though at thirty-three percent for half the year, most of our revenues do not come in evenly throughout the year. Therefore, this percentage is in line with what we generally realize at this time of year. And as far as expenditures, we're at thirty-five percent, and again, these are trending as in prior years. We do have some recommended adjustments, first in revenues. The major revenues, however, are trending as expected. We have seen a decline in transient occupancy tax. We have one hotel that is closed for renovations and another hotel that is renovating while open. Both of those activities have affected the TOT for the year. So, you'll see, as compared to the prior two years, that transient occupancy tax is down. However, I will say that occupancy overall has increased in the city's hotels, so we expect that once these hotels open, we'll be tracking as we have in the past. We are looking at a slight drop in sales tax. Again, this is as we closed out the last fiscal year, we are looking at a lower starting point, and that did affect our numbers to date. And as I mentioned, TOT, we are reducing that estimate by 200,000 as a result of that, those hotel closures. And we are seeing a slight increase in development services for development-related activity of 143,000. As far as other revenue sources, we do and have made some adjustments in internal service funds, and as a result, have modified the internal service fund charges. You'll see an offsetting expenditure reduction as well, when we get to the expenditure side of the equation. Before you are, is a summary of the general activity by department. Again, overall, in that center column, we're at thirty-five percent point, or almost thirty-six percent throughout half the year, and are trending as expected with prior years. And again, we have some adjustments throughout the various department funds, and again, the adjustments are primarily a result of adjustments to our internal service fund allocations and chargeback for those services. Capital improvement fund activity, we do have a minor adjustment of 22,000 in recognizing a deposit that was collected in a prior year, and, but overall, some projects have moved forward as expected, but again, the spending is based on projects as they are completed. Solid waste fund, with one minor adjustment in expenditures, again, related to the internal service fund allocations, but year-to-date, we're trending as expected in that fund as well. Transit fund, the, overall, the fund hasn't changed too significantly. We do have a grant that has been adjusted for in the revenue column, and we are adjusting transfers in slightly. However, I will note that the transfers into the transit fund are primarily going to be coming from the general fund versus the air quality fund, as the air quality funds have been delayed as a result of delay in development. Water funds, again, some minor adjustments for water sales and water activity, so we've adjusted both revenues and expenditures for that, those modifications. Essentially, we have higher water sales and higher water use, which has affected the bottom line for water funds. So, we've adjusted both sides of revenues and expenditures. As far as the sanitary district, again, we've made some adjustments to expenditures. We've taken a look at, a closer look at historical activity, and we've adjusted those expenditures down based on that historical activity. So, we've reduced expenditures overall by $446,000. As far as the reserves, we did project revenues at the end of June 2018. We've calculated the reserve requirements for the city's policy. We've considered other reserve commitments of fund balance, and we have determined the available fund balances above policy level, and we are in line with our reserve requirements, except for a small fund, and this is the Zone Six Spanish Hills Maintenance District, which is not meeting its reserve level goal. The overall budget for this district is about 24,000 this year. Fund balance is just over 1,000, so the fund balance is positive, but the reserve requirement is not being met per the city's policy. So, we continue to address this one fund. But overall, as I stated, the reserves are being met or exceeded in all other city funds per city policy. But we do have those fund balance commitments beyond the fifty percent of reserves that are to be maintained in the general fund. We have some additional reserves for economic development, capital projects, and other operating transfers. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Mr. Tremblay?
Just a couple. We've had the occasion to talk, Jeannie, about, and it's, and the reason I'm asking this question is to just bring it to light. In the mid-year financial report, there is quite a discussion on changes in methodology relative to allocating internal service fund costs. So, just very quickly, can you just summarize what that is all about? What are the internal service funds? And what do we have now and how are we changing?
Internal service funds are essentially cost centers. Central cost centers, for example, the City Hall facility, which is utilized by multiple departments and other city funds. So, we cost-center all the activities in that facility, and we spread it out to, let's say, the general fund, the water fund, the sanitary district fund, based on the staffing related, or square footage used by the staffing related to those activities. So, it's a charge back to those funds, to the fund that houses all those costs. Similarly, you might have a technology fund, like the information systems fund, and we cost all those activities, all those personnel costs and related costs in that fund, and then we charge back the general fund and the water fund and the sanitary district fund for the services that that fund is providing.
And in your opinion, that's an appropriate, from a finance standpoint, that's an appropriate change in the methodology, right?
Right. It's pretty standard practice to have various internal service funds, and the allocation is not the same for each fund. So, it is appropriate to reevaluate the methodology of allocating those charges back, and if... So it is appropriate to reevaluate the methodology of allocating those charges back, and if there have been operational changes, to maybe change the way you allocate to the various funds. So we've streamlined the process, and as part of our annual reporting and with the budget, we should be documenting how we, what, what we use the funds for, and then how we charge back to those funds.
And two other quick questions, if I may. Would you characterize then that new practice as consistent with how other municipalities?
Yes, yes, it is. And I, I do believe, as we went through this process, staff did do additional research to make sure that our practices were consistent, and, and the purpose, again, was to streamline and, and update our methodologies.
And just finally, from an audit standards viewpoint, there's no difficulty, this is appropriate from an auditing standpoint? In other words, our auditors will find this to be perfectly acceptable?
I think the methodology is fair, accurate, and, and a little more easier to follow.
Yes, I agree with that. So, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to approve the FY 2017-18 year mid-year budget report and authorize the city manager to adjust the FY 2017-18 budget and make the necessary appropriations.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go back to page three.
Does that include the Cam San as well?
Oh, sorry, we have a Cam Sand district. You need a motion as well?
And I won't make that motion, but I hear a motion on that.
I'll move to approve the FY 17-18 mid-year budget report and authorize the city manager to adjust the 17-18 budget and make the necessary appropriations.
Second.
Carries unanimously.
Okay, now we'll go back to page three. To City Council, item A, which we didn't take up before, Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, formerly known as LACE, board appointment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier this evening, City Council adopted an ordinance to join the Joint Powers Association, Joint Powers Agreement with Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Authority. They're still operating the JPA under the LACE name. However, they are changing their name to Clean Power Alliance of Southern California. So under the JPA, the city can appoint one director and two alternate members to serve on the board. At, at your last meeting, Mayor Craven had asked for volunteers. I solicited volunteers from the council, and Councilmember Tremblay was first to volunteer to serve as director. Councilmember Morgan has volunteered to serve as first alternate, alternate member, and Councilmember Kildee has volunteered, volunteered to serve as second alternate member. The city's appointed director is expected to attend one meeting per month and possibly serve on board subcommittees if they so choose to do. And the alternate, alternate members are expected to serve on the occasion of the director's absence. So at this time, we're looking for a motion to confirm these appointments.
I just have one question. I should have asked this earlier, I suppose. But how does it work with the Brown Act with three, I'm trying to get to the attorney here, with three people who can possibly be on the same board at different times? I thought that's why we always just add one alternate.
Well, under the Brown Act, if you have three members of the council together at the same time, that is considered to be a meeting. And, but here, I believe this JPA is going to be following the Brown Act, as I understand it. So I don't believe this would be an issue, especially if the items that are being discussed aren't ones that, the city's only going to get one vote on the JPA. So whether that vote is made by the director or by one of the alternates, it's not going to be, the city's not going to have three votes on it. So I, I believe it is.
Well, I understand that, but I would think that if an alternate's there, he's going to talk to somebody about what happened and how he voted, and then if somebody else does the same thing. I'm just trying to get it together in my head, how that works.
Well, I suppose if all three of them get together and they start having a conversation, then yes, that would be an offline meeting, and they shouldn't be doing that. But I, as long as.
Then I guess it's less than a majority of the LACE board, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
What if it had to do, what if it had to do with an action that the city had to take?
Well, if it was an action that the city had to take, you mean in connection with this JPA?
Yeah, let's say the city, that something came back and that all the member cities had to do something. Let's say that the board decides that they're going to do a levy on all JPA members.
Well, the, the director and the two alternates would be able to participate in an open meeting with a discussion on that item, and they could vote on it.
Even though they have already participated in the.
Not together. Yes, yes.
Well, it's a serial meeting if you're all working.
If you're talking together, yes.
And if you don't talk together, how are you going to be the alternate? Every time somebody else goes, you take a different course.
Well, I, we're talking about a hypothetical that, that I suppose could happen, but the three, we shouldn't have the council members talking, the three of them amongst themselves about what a particular issue is that's coming before the board. And so the practicality of it is, I think, that Councilmember Tremblay would be the person attending. If he could not attend, then Mr. Morgan would attend, as I understand, would be the first alternate. And if he couldn't attend, Mr. Kildee could attend. They should not be engaging, as you say, in a serial meeting and talking amongst themselves about the issues. So it may turn out to be that if it came down to a situation where Councilmember Kildee was going to a meeting, he might not have had the benefit of what communications there have been with Mr. Tremblay and Mr. Morgan. But presumably, there'd be some kind of record of these proceedings, there'd be agenda reports. So I think they could get up to speed on what the issue is without having a serial meeting amongst themselves.
So all three would have to keep apprised of what's going on in case they had to go then.
And that's, I would recommend that. And so perhaps what, a way to resolve the issues that you are bringing up, which I think are good points, is that these three council members could receive and should be on the distribution list for the agenda reports and agendas that come out. Pardon me?
And minutes.
Yes, and the minutes, yes, absolutely. The minutes and the agendas, so that they're each educated on the issue, so that, you know, if, if their turn should come up and they need to go to one of the meetings, that they'd be educated on what the issue is. But they shouldn't talk amongst themselves about what, what is going on.
Mr. Morgan.
I, I'm glad there's three, because I foresee times when two of them can't make it, especially if they turn around and have one in LA. Because I used to go scagging, painting and tush, to go down there and do that. And even, even if you have to go to Calabasas sometime, depends on when you go. I used to be on the board for, what is it called, the Contract Cities. It met at Long Beach. And I had to go to Long Beach, and one time I finally said, that's it, because I left to go to the meeting at like four o'clock. Traffic all the way down there is terrible. And so it's not going to be a pleasure if we have to go down to LA. And so I'm glad to see that there's three of us, just in case.
They're only talking about, they're hoping to at some point, but I think your first meetings are going to be in LA.
They will be.
Actually, that's incorrect.
That's incorrect?
No, that is incorrect. There are sites already, either in Calabasas, or I believe Moore Park was another site that they were using for audio only. They're trying to get a video feed for the Calabasas site, but members can attend audio only.
Okay. I, I had read someplace about hoping to something with.
I hope you're correct.
Calabasas, and I hadn't caught the Moore Park part.
I haven't seen that one either.
Okay.
I, can I make a comment on that, though? I hope that whatever they do is, and how they do it, can make it so that the cities can participate, because in reading the minutes of what has occurred so far, it's very evident that LA County's in charge and running the show.
They're going to be.
And, yeah, they probably are going to be anyway. And if all you're doing is sitting out in some remote location, listening to them, you're not going to participate and have any chance of having our voice heard. So this isn't something that you can expect to go and have, suddenly have a huge presence there, because it's very obvious who's already running the show.
And that happens.
Yep.
Mr. Tremblay.
I want to push the wrong button that time. On a related note, though, what I would like, what I would really appreciate from my colleagues is, is what your expect, my, my expectation would be in attending these meetings is bringing back, of course, a status report and any issues that have been voted upon, but also to get guidance from this council in terms of significant policy decisions. That would be your expectation, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
I'm not quite sure.
If there's something that you need to get guidance on, I think you'll need to talk to the city manager about having it put on the agenda, because under council comments, we certainly can't tell you how we want you to vote.
I just want.
I understand it.
And I just want to know how, how this, and I think this is relevant to the agenda item, at least I hope the city attorney agrees with me. I know we have some other joint powers authorities that we belong to, and I don't think that there is ordinarily a placeholder on the agenda for those, for example, for regional SAN. But would the guidance be just to, to have something on the agenda when, after consultation with the city manager, when we think there's something important enough to talk about on that? And then otherwise, this, the comments back on status would be under council comments?
That's right.
Is that how you want to do it? Okay, that helps.
Because you'll get times when you want us to make a decision, all of us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there will be.
Okay. Yes.
What Mr. Tremblay just said about our other JPAs, and maybe this should have been what we should have talked about before we got all three of you to volunteer, what we've done with those is, and I'm particularly thinking of our insurance one, we have a staff member be the, the extra person. Therefore, you never have that problem with your Brown Act issue, because you've got a staff person as that last fallback. And that's something I think we could have done here, because I think staff could have been one of the alternates. If I remember right, the board, the, first, the actual board member had to be elected, but the other ones could be staff.
Well.
And that would be if Mr. Kildee really didn't want to do it.
We have Mr. Tremblay as the primary, Mr. Morgan as the first alternate, and Mr. Kildee as the second alternate on the agenda. So what are the wishes here? Is there a motion?
Move the approval of the recommendation.
Is there a second? I'll second it, get it out on the, on the floor, so. Any other comments? Please vote. Motion carries 4-1 with Mrs. McDonald dissenting. Next item is Public Works, item A, Railroad Quiet Zone. Could we have the staff report?
It's about time.
I know it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. This project is included in the current capital improvement program as Project ST 5009. Staff is requesting tonight the authorization to initiate the first step in the project by issuing a request for qualifications to select an engineering design consultant. The intent of the project is to create a quiet zone along the railroad in the vicinity of the Upland Road and Adolfo Road crossings, as shown on the map and circled at these two crossing locations, with the tracks paralleling Lewis Road. To achieve the quiet zone designation, significant improvements to these crossings are going to be required. Improvements such as additional railroad arm gates, pedestrian improvements, sidewalk, pedestrian gates, I'll have a couple pictures of these types of improvements in just a minute. And based on the existing conditions of these two crossings and the challenging location being directly adjacent to Lewis Road, there will be significant improvements required. With these improvements in place, a quiet zone designation can be applied for, and when that, if that is approved, what essentially creates is what's called a quiet zone, where a train is not required to sound its horn on the approach or the passing through of a crossing. However, it does not mean that a train engineer cannot sound the horn if needed under certain safety requirements, just to make that clear. So it's a lengthy involved process with several approvals required from numerous agencies, including the railroad. The state PUC regulates railroad crossings. The Federal Railroad Administration is who actually makes the ultimate designation as a quiet zone. It'll also include approvals required through Caltrans for the improvements related to Lewis Road. The anticipated schedule with, starting off on design this year will take us into 2019 for design, and also all the approvals from the different agencies initiating the process and carrying through with the railroad, which typically end up working through Nebraska, Omaha with Union Pacific headquarters there, and the, the FRA coordination. So it will be a lengthy design process, possibly begin a construction anticipated in late 2019, with, you know, a year allowed for construction and the final designation of approval of the quiet zone possibly in, in late 2020. Right now, the cost is, is really undetermined. It's, it's hard to put a finger on it until we do take this initial step to enter into the design phase to really get a better feel for what all improvements are going to be These types of improvements have been made in other locations. There are other quiet zones within the state that have been achieved. So based on what information we do have, and through the lengthy approval process, where we're going to be heavily dependent on consultants to help us through that, design and approval could be in the range of $250,000 up to $500,000 for those services. Again, it's, it's too early to tell for sure what the total is there. Based on your typical improvements that are required to create these types of, and another term that's used in, in our local area, the MetroLink Railroad has implemented and constructed, that's what I'll have a picture of, is what's called a sealed corridor improvements. They have achieved that at different locations. But essentially, anywhere between a million and a half to even $2 million of improvements may be required. It just totally depends on the, on the site, the location. Like I said, the, the challenge being immediately adjacent to State Route 34 on Lewis Road will have an effect on those total costs. So in the ballpark of $4 million to, could be up to $5 million total, design and construction. We just, we just don't know for sure yet. We'll do all we can to minimize those costs, and yet, there are certain standard requirements that you have to meet to be able to be qualified for the quiet zone. Funding source, right now, we do have federal FTA monies in the CIP budgeted for design to get us going on design through that course, and then the consultant will also help us identify any other possible grants, funding sources that may be available. And we'll address that as we move forward through the design and on, into construction, hopefully. So an example of, it is not actually a quiet zone, the trains are pretty loud going through Simi Valley. This is a location where one of those MetroLink projects were accomplished to create a sealed corridor. And over here on the, this is the southbound leg of Sycamore at, at LA Avenue, you can see there's, you see your traditional gates on the approach, and then there's what we call exit gates. So it's a quad gate system. There was a couple exhibits in this, in the staff report showing those quad gates. Essentially, those arms come down, exit arms would then put up a barrier for any vehicles that might be able to enter, because without those, a vehicle could enter into the travel lane here the wrong way and end up on the tracks. The other improvements are the, are the medians, and those provide barrier, especially on the other side. There isn't exit gates on this side because of the median barrier there. So each side is, is unique as to what type of improvements are required. Another example of crossing here, specifically showing the pedestrian gate, a small gate, the, the signal, crossing arms are down in this case. It is in Orange County where a quiet zone does exist. And you can see, that's why the yellow sign here is saying no train horn. So a lot of signage, a lot of pedestrian improvements with gates, railings. horn. So a lot of signage, a lot of pedestrian improvements with gates, railing. This over here is an exit-only gate. If somebody's crossing, a pedestrian's crossing, when the gates do come down, they can come through here, and it's an exit-only, free swinging always, allowing an exit path out of the track area for pedestrians. So that's a quick summary of the, of the project and the requirements that are going to be a part of this. We will be returning to council with a recommendation to award to the qualified consultant as we go through the consultant selection process. And that completes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mrs. McDonald?
At what point in time does the approval come from? After design? Not after construction?
The, and that's also something that we're going to be learning, the exact process through. We haven't gone through it, obviously, before. But through the design process, that design process engages the PUC, it engages the FRA, obviously, the railroad. So there's, there's application processes and initiating the, the steps towards, you know, basically we're making our wishes known that it would be ultimately a quiet zone. So it's in tandem with the design. And then obviously, your design, if you can, you know, end up with assurance that we can build those improvements required, then it's kind of a package deal. You've got a design completed with the assurance of when we complete those, that it would move into the final approval of the quiet zone. I will, I will add, actually, when I was in Moore Park, we were reviewing the sealed corridor improvements at a couple crossings. The city of Carlsbad was going through a quiet zone process, and I did hear from the public works director there asking, asking me in Moore Park if we were proceeding with a quiet zone, and they, we did not, as in Simi Valley, it's not an actual quiet zone. And he was talking about the lengthy negotiation process for the ultimate, and I believe there's some type of an agreement, and there is quite a bit of insurance. And I think JPIA even weighs in on, on the quiet zone, insurance coverages and restrictions of what there may be. But anyway, and there's, there's certain liabilities. And so again, we don't know the details at this point of what the city would be required to take on in addition to building the improvements. There would be an agreement that would have to be reached where there's, you know, the cities agreeing to certain conditions and requirements.
So we would, we would find all this out before we ever went to construction?
Correct.
We'll design it, and then there will be some kind of a talk to say, okay, it's designed, it should meet the requirements. Then you take the next, so all the way along, we're getting approvals. So we don't get to the end and say, oh, sorry, we spent $6 million and you haven't met the requirements?
Correct.
So, okay.
So we are committed to a quiet zone, or we're initially looking at the sealed median thing, or what?
Well, the...
Or we're looking at all of them, or?
The project's been identified in the CIP as a quiet zone, with that being the intent. So that's the track we're taking, is moving forward with making it known that we are essentially applying, and part of that application is moving through the design process to be qualified for an eventual approval for quiet zone. So...
Somehow, I guess I was sleeping if we were discussing the three different kinds and made a choice between the three different kinds before. I know the gentleman asked us for a quiet zone, but I didn't really realize until now there were different kinds that might have faster approvals or different, different commitments.
I don't think we had the need for that one. We talked about this many, many years ago, long before the gentleman came before us. It was the idea of the quiet zone. That's why we're doing it. We're not doing it to, basically because of the crossing itself, like you have some of these problems in Moore Park and Simi, but because of the quiet. I mean, that's why it got on the CIP budget in the first place.
If the others are supposed to be quiet, it says no...
That one is a quiet zone.
Correct.
Oh, that's a quiet zone?
Correct.
Okay. I misunderstood.
Isn't that how you remember it? It was the whole quiet?
That's right.
Yeah, that's why we're doing it.
I mean, right now...
Well, I knew that. I thought that maybe at the others, I guess I don't know why the others were brought up then.
Yes, just to show examples.
Showing examples, that's all.
The others, the others still have the, the train horns?
Correct, yes. The others have the train horns. It's just an example of the actual improvements that are required, could be required. Again, it varies depending on the layout, the uniqueness of each site.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Kildee?
Yes, sir. At this particular point, will the funding come out of the transit? And if that's the case, is that usually state and federal monies that are in that fund?
So it's the FTA money, Federal Transportation Act money, that we get through, I think it's administered through VCTC, that we've, you know, applied for and received. And when we have, we have those monies as far as grant, if you will, program for this project. And I believe it's reimbursement-based, so it's...
Well, that, we don't know yet, but typically, when they do, if they do approve something like this, is it approved for 100% of the cost or a percentage of it, or is it depend on how you negotiate it?
Uh, no, there's, there's certain, and I'm not positive off the top of my head at what kind of local match there is on the FTA funds. I don't know if you recall at all.
Well, we're dealing with probably a couple of different, the FTA has a lot of different funding sources. And so we receive, as a designated recipient area, a certain amount, we're eligible to put in a request for a certain amount of capital funds every year. And if we don't, because we're fortunate, we're in an area, we don't compete with other agencies, that just accumulates, the balance accumulates. And so that's something we have total control over, and I believe we have about a $2 million balance.
$2 million?
That's accumulated. Now with that, we can turn around and use that to leverage and apply for other grants. But that hasn't occurred yet, and we don't know the likelihood of an outcome in being able to secure enough money to actually build the project. So what we're really identifying is that we have a budget that's available to pay for the design. But unless we secure a large grant, we're not going to be able to have the funds available to construct the project.
Any other questions?
So this is just for the design at this point, though, right?
Correct.
Okay. What are the wishes of the council?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we authorize the staff to issue the RFQ.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Please vote.
I'd say, Your Honor, it's hallelujah. We got it moving finally.
Motion passes 5-0.
I know you and I can hear five horns.
Next is Item B, new production well and rehabilitation of wells A and B for the North Pleasant Valley Desalter Facility project. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. This item is to consider issuing a request for proposals for professional design services for a new well and rehabilitation of wells A and B for the Desalter project. The design of the Desalter project is underway, and it's currently between the 30% and the 60% level of completion. And during this first phase of the design, the team has identified the need to rehabilitate the existing city wells A and B and construct a new well at the Desalter site to be able to adequately supply water for treatment by the facility. On the screen is an overview of the location of the two wells, existing well A and B. Existing well A is in the Medical Plaza parking lot off of Las Poses, just west of Antonio. Existing well B is up around on the curve in Antonio, directly behind the hospital. And the wells will supply water to the Desalter through what we call a conveyance pipeline that'll traverse over to the east to the Desalter site. The new production wells proposed on the Desalter site up in the northwest corner. So the recommendation at this point is that the wells A and B should be rehabilitated to be able to provide the amount of water needed. Right now, the pumping capacity is, is diminished over time, just in the history or use of a well, they typically need to be rehabbed every so often, and they are due, even as far as the time schedule goes for that. So the rehab of both wells would be an upgrade of electrical components, including motors and the controls. The pumps themselves would be changed to be able to optimize the delivery to the Desalter. You know, we're adding in, right now, they pump directly into the system, distribution system, and this would be a change to be able to include the option. And for the primary delivery would be to go directly to the Desalter, which we would see an increase in energy efficiency and the resulting cost savings associated with that. We are also going to maintain the ability to pump directly into the distribution system also when needed. That's the rehab at the two existing wells. The new production well would be a new well drilled solely dedicated to supply the Desalter, approximately a 1,500 gallons per minute flow rate there. The design of this, obviously, is dedicated for the Desalter, so the pumps and motors will be optimized for that operation. And what we gain is, without a new well, we could maybe just barely supply the needed water to the Desalter. Probably, we do need additional supply, but this also provides the flexibility to not have to run well A and B at such a high level of runtime, what we call it. Basically, they'd have to be up 90%, runtime all the time. So this provides additional operational flexibility with a new well. When one of the wells needs to be serviced or taken down, we'd have the, the other wells capable of supplying the Desalter with the needed water. So there's a couple shots of the existing well. This is well A from the parking lot, looking into the facility with the pump, well and pump actually under the shed, protective shed there. This is a shot of the electrical equipment that will be upgraded, current controls. It's basically a single-speed hard start setup now that's aged. This needs to be upgraded. We would, anyway, and it will be going with a variable frequency drive, higher efficiency equipment. A shot of well B from Antonio, right behind the hospital. That's the entry into there. And then once you get inside, again, the wells here under a protective canopy, we've got gates that open up on the corners there to be able to access and, and provide service to the, to the wells as needed. So the design consultant will prepare plans and specs for this work, this rehab and eventual drilling of a new well. And of course, staff will be returning to city council with a recommendation for award of agreement to a design consultant. So that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Tremblay?
Just one. I mean, we already, we have a consultant for the Desalter project. The staff report notes that it's a single, first of all, it's a single design consultant for all three of these items, correct?
That's correct.
And we want someone who is different than the, than the design engineer, design consultant that's doing the work on the Desalter project.
Correct. Yeah.
Because, just finish my sentence.
Okay. Largely because of the, the design that goes into, especially with the new well, and even the rehab of the existing wells. I mean, it is specific well design services, you know, and especially with the hydrogeological information that's needed to be obtained for the new well, to design that new well properly. So it is, so specialized...
It's something that's segregable from the other work that's being done.
Correct. Not to say that the existing consultant may have the staff and the expertise to do that also, but we'd most likely be looking at a different consultant that specializes in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? What are the wishes of the council?
Your Honor, I'd like to motion, make a motion, authorize staff to issue a request for proposals for professional design services for a new production well and rehabilitation of wells A and B for the North Pleasant Valley Desalter Facility project.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I withdraw.
Motion second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. That gets us over to new business oral comments, communications. Mr. City Manager?
No new information.
Mr. City Attorney?
I have no items.
We're going to start at the other end and come this way this time. City Council, Mr. Tremblay?
Just a brief report on meetings attended. I attended with Mrs. McDonald, the January 30 meeting of the PVRPD ad hoc needs assessment. Attended the, of course, the February 7 special meeting of the council with respect to goals, that study session. And then finally, with the mayor, I attended the liaison committee meeting on February 9.
Mr. Kildee?
That concludes my comments.
Yes, meetings attended. The economic development committee meeting, I attended that. VRSD, February 1, I attended that. And February 7, the goal study session, I attended that. And I just want to get a clarification on the, the term limits. Maybe this is a legal question, you can get back to me on this. But my understanding is that we cannot take a position either in favor or in opposition of that as a city council. Is that correct?
You know, I'll need to look that one up. Let me check on that.
You can get back to me on that?
Yeah, let me get back to you.
All right. And it's February 14, Valentine's Day. Yeah, that's good. So I just want to wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day. It's an interesting way to spend Valentine's Day, isn't it? You wouldn't want it any other way.
Hey, we spend birthdays here. May as well spend Valentine's Days here.
It is.
Okay. Mrs. McDonald?
I don't have a sheet. Did we have a sheet, a list up there? You stole it?
Well, I thought it was mine.
So if I have everything.
Maybe I stole yours?
Meetings, Oversight Board, our VCOG admin committee, the Pleasant Valley Ad hoc Needs Assessment Committee meeting. And then that evening, we also had a public meeting on the results of the survey that's out there. And it was well-attended, some good questions. They need to have time to absorb it, but we'll see what happens next. And that night, we had a meeting regarding the 101 freeway improvements that the city held. And it wasn't, I think, a pretty good turnout considering the subject. It's probably not the most exciting subject to some people, but...
It was a busy day.
A lot of people complained about it, so you'd think it'd be something of interest to a lot of people.
And there were some good questions. I mean, they, the people that came really were, were thinking hard about it, so that's good. So anyone that says we don't engage our public doesn't, hasn't been paying attention. The next one was VCTC. We had that on Friday, and our goal setting. And again, that was a lively discussion. I have just a couple of comments. Oh, I also did attend the, last Saturday, for the Vietnam Vet event. And that, that was very, very good. It was so good to hear the vets talk about their experiences. Personally, I think we could have done without the moderator because I didn't really like listening to all of her, whatnot. But to hear the, the vets talk about their experience. And to me, I think the more we can do to thank them and honor them for their service, it's just immeasurable. But I do want to thank everyone that participated, particularly, I understand Kathy Tally was the main driver for all of, all of the hard work.
She did the heavy pulling and getting it all together.
Yeah, well, she did a wonderful job. So we do need to, we do need to thank her. Just a couple of updates. Can somebody give us an update on the Carmen medians? And the other one I'd like an update on, it's the Lewis Road Monument fencing that's going on. And the question with that one is, how far down Daly does it go towards the first street that's from Arneal? I can't remember what that little street is that goes up.
Lomita?
Lomita goes that way. Anyway, those are my two, two updates.
Okay, yes. The Carmen medians are, if you recall, we had rejected bids before, and it's currently out to rebid. So it's out to bid, and we expect that to bid and then come back to council for award, March 28 is the goal. And then go through the award, post-award, contracted, all that in place, and then construction to begin April, end of April or so, depending on the exact schedule and timing for the contractor.
One day, I came by the intersection at Carmen, and it was all blocked off and blocked up going down Carmen. I was hoping that something was happening, but that was something totally different.
Yeah, totally different, but there was definitely something happening. I drove through that also, if it was just a day or two ago, probably.
Mm-hmm.
It was lining our manholes. We have a manhole lining project going on for...
Boy, that was a lot to line a manhole.
Yes.
Well, it's all up down that street.
It's a busy, busy intersection, and the manhole's right in the middle, so...
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Very important project, though.
It is, it is.
The answer to the other question, on the Lewis Road off-ramps on Daly Drive, that project there. So the wall begins at Lomita and goes on the south side of that first house, and then cuts back across the alley, and then continues east to the cul-de-sac... and then cuts back across the alley, and then continues east to the cul-de-sac. Essentially, it's Glen, I believe that's Glen, the Glen cul-de-sac. That, so from the north, Glen dead ends, it goes just past, it's not Berry, what's that? Fulton.
Fulton, the old Fulton Street, so it goes down that.
So the wall essentially goes from Lomita to Bear, Glen, the cul-de-sac of Glen.
And I don't think it's Lomita. Doesn't Lomita go the other way? It was whatever that street is before Arneal is what we're, it goes all the way to the corner, I guess is what I'm.
I'm sorry, I've got, you're right, I've got it mixed, my east, north, south mixed up here.
It starts here on Glen Drive.
Yes.
And then it goes adjacent to this property line, and then it comes up here, and then goes across, and basically ends here. And it's practically done, the wall's practically done.
Yes, the wall is.
Oh, it's gone fast.
Yeah, it looks terrific.
And the monument's down. But the last time I was there, it didn't go all the way down to this, whatever street that is. Is it Glen that comes out there?
This is, and then this little cul-de-sac's Fulton.
Are you going to put plants in front of that wall?
Yes.
Yes.
That was my next question, because I've been telling people, I know they're going to.
And vines on the wall.
Yes, it'll be plants, vines, it's going to have graffiti coating, graffiti resistant coating.
Joe, just to make sure I understand, it does go all the way down to that corner?
It goes here from this corner all the way down and across to here. Yes.
Okay, yeah, I see where you are now.
That was the question, because the last time I saw it, it wasn't down that, all the way down there, so that was.
So this wall is done, and it looks great.
Is that an Alora Street?
This is Glen. This street's called Lomita, and then this is Fulton.
Oh, okay.
Right.
There we go.
Yeah, this is our Neil Road. And then the new city identification sign is going up, and it looks terrific also, it's here. At the off.
They've gone up really fast.
Yeah, they've done a good job.
Okay.
Public Works is doing a great job on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And it's pretty.
Well, number one, we had legislative committee meeting.
Oh, I forgot that one.
And at the legislative committee, we looked at our platform, which you voted on tonight on the consent calendar. We also looked at a lot of legislation that does affect Camarillo. And some that'll be coming forward too as we follow these things. I won't get too much into this, because it'd be too long. We also went to the Camarillo Ranch Board Foundation meeting, which has got a good group of people working with that thing. I mean, they're doing a great job, some smart people. And so we went through budget and all kinds of things that night. Charlotte, I'll let you repeat the whole thing. Our goal session, we all attended that. And then I went to Air Pollution Control Board meeting, which I thought was going to be in and out fast, but ended up, all the legislation started being reported on that affects air quality control. But also, they gave a long report on the Thomas Fire. And what we had to do is, is the Air Quality Board, getting the machines out and getting this, that, and the other. And even today, there are some of those, what do they call that? They're oil seeps. They're still, firemen are out there still trying to get them under control, you know, get them to quit seeping and smoking. So that's still going on. Now, I'm looking at all different kinds of ways of doing it, of course, I'm not going through everything, but the firemen should know that. Ribbon cuttings, I had two. One ribbon cutting's at the new car superstore. If you want a new car, good place to go, because they order it straight, and they can get it under the blue book, under the, what do you call that? The recommended price. And so it was a good little opening, and I think they'll be successful. On Ventura Boulevard, it's right next to the coffee shop there. Dorothy's on one side, it's down there by the coffee shop. And then ribbon cutting at the art studio, can't think of the name of the art studio, it's on West Ventura Boulevard. The gentleman is from Russia, but he's been to Israel many times, all over Europe, his art reflects it. It's fantastic. He's a two-story art studio where, you know, works on the art and then also shows it off. So that was a very fun time. As you turn on Ventura Boulevard and go back toward the freeway, you know how it zags? Past Springville Bridge, it goes back toward the freeway, well, it's right there in those, if you want any time, Sundays are the best time for them to go look and, you know, see his art. I went to the Vietnam Vets, I won't go too far into that, but I'd like to say one thing, Mr. Holly and Mr. Plum, prisoner of war, and Mr. Holly, I call him the grunt, because he was one of my classmates. He didn't tell you everything, because I asked him, we had to ask questions, and after I asked him a question, I asked Mr. Holly, could you tell us about the famous picture? His picture was in papers everywhere, because they'd been out in the jungle. And he came back and took his shoes off, and he's sitting up on a sand berm, and he was burning leeches off his leg. And taking his shoes off to get them dry. So it was kind of one of those things that told the story of Vietnam, and how they did not know we had protests over here, none of them. And neither did Mr. Plum in the prison. They kept telling him that, oh, I'm sorry, they kept telling him that, and all prisoners of war said they don't believe him. Those two gentlemen really gave you, I wish we could have filmed it, so people could see what they went through. Little bit, not all of it. John didn't film all of it, did he?
We were able to get the panel discussion.
There.
That's as much tape as we had.
Okay.
But we got the full panel discussion.
Yeah, we just didn't get that, those kind of parts there, too bad. I went by Kaiser Permanente, oh, wait, did I tell you about Palm Springs last time I went to Palm Springs? And brought back potential.
You mean the CASA meeting?
The CASA meeting.
It was after the last council.
Okay, then I told you.
No.
I'm sorry.
CASA meeting was after the last council.
Well, it's good to go to these things, because there I met the gentleman that's the head of the Cal EPA. And we were talking, and he said, I said, what kind of grants do you give? And he says, oh, we give those in the reservoirs and connections. I said, really? And so I told him what we need to do out here in our area, and he said, call them. Because that's the area that they give grants out on. So we can pick up enough to build our, that was accomplishment. But you get to talk to a lot, a lot of things, by going to these conferences, and so I would advise everyone, CASA's a good one to go to, always.
I'll quit changing the dates, we might all get it.
I know, I know. But I left that night after the city council meeting to get there. It was tough getting up at 8 o'clock in the morning. But I did it, went through the whole thing. The other thing today, I went to Kaiser Permanente, and I did happen to ask them, not for me, but just for some reason, but I was asking the guy that was in charge of it, have they, what kind of a report, or what have they had as far as flu is concerned? They said they have a string of it for a while, but now the last two weeks, they haven't had any. So maybe this bacteria's running its course, hopefully. That's it.
Okay. I was gone for 12 of the 21 days since we last met. And when I came back, the first thing I noticed the next morning was that the signals at Pettit and Village at the Park Drive were up and working. Good job. Of course, now I get complaints at the YMCA about, from people who don't want to wait for the left turn arrow, but.
And also, it needs to be looked at, because it changes, and there's nobody around, so I don't know if they fine tune there.
Well, they're working on it, but these are the same people who used to complain that they didn't like a four-way stop, and it was dangerous, so. You gotta take the good with the bad. And so, since I've been back, I've attended two RDP meetings on the 6th and the 8th. I attended the Camarillo Ranch Foundation Board on the 6th, the goal setting session, two ribbon cuttings, a liaison committee meeting on the 9th, the Vietnam War Veterans Program on the 10th, and I thought it was excellent. I think that the subcommittee put together a great panel. And then on Sunday, I attended something I want to tell you a little more about. It was called the Thomas Fire Help Thank You Program, and I know Mr. Tremblay was out there. There was a young woman named Emily, and I didn't catch her last name, but look out for a woman named Emily, because she's going to go places. She's a young woman, and during Hurricane Maria, she, as I got the story, she was in Puerto Rico, and she was pregnant. And Angel Flight airlifted her. And after the Thomas Fire and after the problems in Montecito, she thought, why can't we have Angel Flight help us? She contacted them. She also contacted other groups, and other pilots signed up immediately who hadn't been in part of Angel Flight. And they did more than 100 operations to get people from Montecito down here, or down someplace in Ventura County for cancer treatments, and things that really couldn't wait until the highway was open. One pilot I talked to flew blood from here up to there. And then there's other blood that has to be flown down here to be treated, so it can go back for cancer treatments. There were patients of all kinds, and she really arranged something without being connected to an organization. She did a tremendous job, and I thank the city clerk for working and in less than a day, getting me a certificate of appreciation to Emily for putting it together, because I, and I'll get her last name for you, and you just watch, she's going to go places.
Put her in charge of FEMA.
She's gonna, she needs to be in charge of a whole lot of things. I think she lives in Montecito. Well, no, she could live in Santa Barbara, I don't know where she lives.
I forgot one thing, and you guys appreciate this, because all, I think, most of you know Reverend, Reverend, Reverend Hippler.
Can I finish my report?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were through.
No, I'm not done. That was just, that was actually the most exciting meeting I attended. The staff, today, this morning, I went out to the airport to a place that, if anybody's still listening, at 9:25. I think it's a great place, and parents and grandparents need to know about this service. It's sponsored by the Ventura County Fire Department, but it's something called Safe Kids Ventura County. And they will check the installation of car seats. They will check your car seats to make sure it's acceptable and still a good car seat. There was one woman who showed up, and her car seat didn't meet their requirements, so they went and got one. She signed a waiver, and she got a new car seat. They installed not just a new car seat for me, and the city manager hasn't done his duty. I've been waiting for a message to come down all evening saying, I have a new grandson, but he didn't get me that message. No, it hasn't, apparently. But we got the car seat installed, and they also, while they were at it, reinstalled a booster seat. They'll also do the same for boosters. And so they're there every Wednesday. It's the only place in the county where, once a week, every place else, it's once a month. And the number you call for an appointment is 983-7582, 983-7582. And it's a great, if you have one installed, or if you're concerned that maybe it's no longer a legal or good car seat, it's a great place to go. The women were very helpful. And finally, I'm still concerned about the drought and the amount of rain. I know I got a letter from Metropolitan telling us how they had done so much for water and the snowpack, which I believe is non-existent, but they said was great. And they said their reservoirs have been refilled to pre-drought levels, and they have done a lot for putting groundwater, or putting water back into the ground to restore the aquifers. And I'll just tell you this, the aquifer from which we pump has not been restored, and it's not going to be. We can have a really big miracle march, and it just won't work. So everybody out there needs to work on water conservation. Okay, Mr. Morgan?
I'd like to, on your, on the idea of water conserva, they better go look at Kachuma and Casitas. Casitas is down 75 feet, and the way it's going now, it's going to go further. And Kachuma's still really low. No, I went to a meeting I forgot to tell you about, that Reverend, I got a last-minute invitation for Reverend, Reverend Hippler. You know Mark Hippler, Tony, you know Mark. His dad's 98 years old this weekend, and he started a new church in Oxnard. I mean, yes, the dad started Lutheran Church in Oxnard over in the River Ridge area. We've got a whole lot of people, no churches, and so they started one. The man is amazing, that he can go do church services and bring in a new minister and help him over there. So I want you to tell you, he's a great Cameroonian. So I told him, behalf of the city council, you know, look up to you.
Okay, Mr. Tremblay?
Go ahead, go ahead. Well, I.
I saw your hand out there first, so.
I wanted to know if we could adjourn in memory this evening, and I, there may be a couple of requests here, I'm not sure, but certainly in memory of those who lost their lives today in Florida in that tragic high school shooting, just an awful, awful tragedy. So I was hoping the council might see its way clear to adjourn in their memory, and.
Sure.
I'm not sure if there may be another request or not.
Mr. Kildy?
Yeah, I'd like to see if we can.
Adjourn.
If we could adjourn in the memory of Tim Griffin. Griffin Brothers Mortuary, sir, Tim was a Tim was a lifelong friend of mine, and I went all through school with him. And many of us that have gone to funerals in the past have probably seen Tim as Brother Mark working there. He was a very dedicated employee there. And unfortunately, he died apparently very tragically in his sleep. Kind of a shock to those of us that knew him well and his family, so I ask you to keep them in your prayers. His dad, Russ Griffin, started Griffin Brothers Mortuary with his brother Tom up in Thousand Oaks. And Tim was in business with his brother Mark. And they're a longtime Camarillo family, Cam High grads, and pillars in our community. So Tim will be sorely missed, and I ask that we adjourn on his memory. And he was a very big supporter of the city and the city council, and lived his whole life here, and was very proud to be a Camerillo resident, so I ask if we could adjourn his memory.
Okay, we will adjourn in the memory of Tim Griffin, and also those who lost their lives today in Florida. And with that, we're adjourned.